Business and Finance, this is Lindsay Albinaz. And our reporting secretary, Robin MacCarroll. And our principal, David Lanzinski. I would ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There will be a joint meeting with the Somerset School Committee on Thursday, December 13th, 2018, in the school committee room at North Elementary School, 580 West Stonehill Road, beginning at 6:30 PM. The next scheduled meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee will be on Thursday, January 3rd, 2019, at 6:30 PM, at the Berkeley Middle School Library, 21 North Main Street, Berkeley. The first item on our agenda under Student Achievement, Teaching and Learning is to welcome our state champion field hockey team.
Okay, obviously, this is not the whole team, but some could make it tonight. This is our assistant coach, Liz Correa. Here's our goalie, Maxine Ferrara. Our defender, Kaylee McDonald. Midfielder, Kami Crook. Lauren Rothwell is midfielder, and Emma is also a midfielder/forward. And our volunteer assistant coach, Brian Leonard. I'd like to thank you guys for supporting us. The road was rough, but we persevered and just glad to have won it all. We stayed focused and got the job done. And first practice, these kids said it was ring season, and it truly was ring season. Does anyone else want to say anything?
Did you receive the state championship trophy yet?
We did.
Oh, well, you should have brought it along. When we welcome the band, they always bring their trophies along.
Oh, our trophy's not as big. Our trophy is just the state of Massachusetts trophy. That's all, the silhouette of Mass. It's not too big.
Well, it was hard won, so it was worth the effort. Does anyone else on the committee have anything to say or any questions?
So, how many seniors do you have?
We had eight seniors.
So, that's a big chunk, right?
But we have a lot of turnovers.
Yeah, I'm sure you can replace them pretty quickly.
Yeah, one of our seniors is continuing to play next year at UMass Lowell. She just signed her letter of intent about two weeks ago. We were all there and witnessed that. That was pretty special.
So, you're definitely building like a dynasty, because my daughter's in sixth grade, and she is, like, hooked and can't wait to get to that school.
That's all we can hope for.
Do they all have to pass a beauty contest before they even play golf?
Charming them again.
Is there a breath? Anyone else?
I mean, I'll just say, as a parent of a child that's on the team, you guys did a phenomenal job. This team was the most conditioned, the most well-coached and disciplined in regards to playing their position, passing, and there wasn't, even though we had people that were, you know, scored more goals, it was definitely a team effort, and there was no, the whole thing about there's no onion team. I mean, it was definitely a team effort. You guys had adversity, you pushed through it, you kept your nose to the grindstone, and just continued to win and win and win, and it was exciting to watch. So, it was a season that you'll always remember, and you couldn't be more proud of it.
I tell them in 10 years to come, they should be in the whole thing.
Yes.
This is the first state championship or field.
I know you had a phenomenal goalie. How many shutouts did you have?
In the regular season, I think it was 17, but most of them, I didn't really get a shot on goal. Then, in the playoffs, I got a shutout, first game against Wellesley. Well, the South sectional final, I got a shutout, and the state semifinals, I got a shutout.
Yes, our defense only allowed eight goals the whole season. That was through 24 games. Our team only allowed eight.
So, this is also the, I believe, the first state championship for Somerset Berkeley, which is really exciting, too. So, out of all sports, this is the first Somerset Berkeley state championship. And I want to give Jen a lot of credit, too. Jen's been around a while, and I have the luxury of playing for her in high school, so to return and be under such a great coach, and to learn from her as a coach, and to finally have her succeed, and have the kids succeed and win a championship, is awesome, too. A lot of bragging about her.
So, I've watched two practices, and although the girls are super focused, super intense, it's encouraging when you see the coaches doing all the drills and running around and doing all that. I know every team I've coached, I've never done that. You know, that just speaks to the commitment from the whole players and coaches.
We try, we try. We don't do everything, but we try.
Well, I would just like to add, you can, I'm sure you can imagine that we're extremely proud of you and your accomplishment. It isn't often that we have a state championship team, and as I said, this may well be the first that Somerset Berkeley has had. So, you certainly demonstrated great athleticism throughout the season, but I want you to know that I'm equally proud of the character that this team showed, particularly as the season wore on. And you stayed together as a team, played hard, and really, really showed the character that really makes you champions. So, I want to congratulate you, not only for your skill on the field, but also the character that you brought to the field.
If I may, here's two. Just to back up some of the other things that have been said, I've been watching this team for four years, and you really do, as Mrs. Rothwell said, you epitomize teamwork. Every single game I've seen, I've seen many of them, most of the home games and some of the away games. Your hard work is just outstanding. I remember telling Emma, when she was a sophomore, that looking at the talent that was already on this team, and that looking at some of the talent that I was seeing on the Somerset Middle School team, a couple of the players standing in the middle there, I told them, when you're senior, this team should be winning the state championship, because there's just so much talent. And I saw yesterday or the day before, Somerset Berkeley is ranked the second-best team in New England, all going through. So, congratulations.
Not to brag, but we're 23rd in the country right now.
It'd be more impressive if you were number one in New England, and 22nd in the country, but that's okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, so the next item we have is to consider approval of ski trip to Smuggler's Notch, January 25th to 27th, 2019. You have the proposal in the materials for this meeting. Please, the previous.
How's everybody doing today? All right, so, we've been doing this for a number of years now, I'm just going to quickly go over. Excuse me, my voice has been a bit hoarse for about two weeks, and I gotta stop talking, I guess, in school, I don't know, I don't know how to do that. So, we're heading up to Smuggler's Notch, we go up there every year, at least once, sometimes twice. We usually leave around here around 5:00 AM on Friday, so we get pretty much, get up there around 11:00, and get a good, a good day of skiing on Friday, and ski all day Saturday, and then we ski till about 1:00, 2:00 o'clock on Sunday, and there's a pretty quiet bus ride on the way home. So, my justification rationale, ski trips have been part of the hook for students for decades, it's beneficial to students in a variety of ways, it often brings together students from various different backgrounds, creates new friendships, increases interaction between students and teachers. It also engages the students bodily, kinesthetic learning style, challenges students to think while moving, it also helps lift their confidence, overcome obstacles, and find success. Successfully navigating a challenging run leads to elation and positive self-awareness. It's also a positive learning journey, and it can create a new passion, as I say here, that's where I first learned about skiing, was on a school trip in high school, and I got bit by the bug, for sure. It's also a really good way for students to see their teachers in a different light, outside the classroom, as positive role models. So, again, just outside of school. So, I have here, I think you guys will have, the copies there, the agenda. Smugglers, they just built a brand-new indoor fun zone facility. It's got, like, off-the-court stuff, it's got bounce houses, it's got all ages, so it's really a cool mountain. It's got pools, hot tubs, tubing at night, ice skating, if it's available. They can go cross-country, so it's really nice. And the nice thing about the mountain, it's all contained, there's nothing really else, nothing out there that kids can go and get distracted by, so that's one of that. So, I'm seeking your approval for another year.
Any questions?
What's the transportation company, what's the transportation setup for this trip?
Transportation setup is done through the mountain.
Okay.
So, that changes from year to year. Last year, we had a company out of New York, we've got companies coming out of Connecticut, so on their end, they take care of that whole thing, so it's coach buses, so that's the principle.
And do you have certain kids sign up for this already?
Yeah, we had a meeting last week. The numbers are tough until the checks start coming in, because a lot of kids come, I think we had about 75, 80 kids show up, but that, years past, we've taken that many, but the average in the past, I would say five or six, has been about 40. So, we do, our condos are slope side, so depending on if you're lucky, your sliding glass door goes right down a hill, right to a lift. Chaparrones are one to 11, so there's a chaperone in every condo. Kids have to check in, kids get our phone numbers, you can contact them anytime, so...
Are the chaperones teachers parents?
Some are teachers, some are parents. Kind of depends on what we get. Usually have a, in the past, again, half dozen years or so, it's been a couple of male teacher chaperones. We've had a harder time getting female chaperones who are teachers, so we always kind of put that out there first for them. But, as I said, the past few years, we've had some parents.
Is this the same chaperone ratio as years past?
Yes, one to 11.
So, I usually ask, well, I usually ask a couple of questions. So, one is, is there any provision for students who may not be able to afford the cost to go?
No, unless you all would be willing to do. I mean, it's student-funded, 100%, so there's nothing that's a fund or anything like that that kind of goes into, so if, I'm not too sure, I haven't had that circumstance arise. I've had kids who have been unable to pay it all up front, you know, they've kind of done installment payments, but I wouldn't know where to begin to talk to if somebody needed to have that money to go on a trip and couldn't afford it. So, I guess I could ask them that question, what would we do?
You come see me, and I take care of the students, you know?
Okay.
Okay, that's great. And the thing, the second thing I always ask is, has the principal approved the ratio of chaperones to students? Seems okay, but the principal's satisfied with that?
Absolutely, you do a great job of that.
Any other questions? And if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Smuggler's Notch ski board and snowboard trip on January 25th.
12.
Second. Okay, motion made by Mr. Patel, and seconded by Mr. Larve. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm great, Hollard.
You too.
Next item on the agenda is a student representative report, including discussion of student surveys and town meetings. So, Ryan, if you'd like to first do your report, and then we'll pick up the other topics that you raised at our last meeting.
All right, hello, just to reiterate, my name's Ryan Silverman, and I'm a student representative. So, I think, first thing I need to talk about is Case Riley. I think this year, Case Riley went very well. We had some very good skits, and you could see the talent in our school really well. So, that was a fun event for everyone. Second thing I'd like to bring up is, last night, the debate team had a meet, and they all did very well. Most of them had one win and one loss, which is really good, except for one team, Jacob Biel and Jared Silverman, who were able to secure two wins that night. In addition, the National Honor Society went to an honorable today and got second. The student council plans on having a meeting next week, where it will be discussed what we will be doing for the holiday season, which will likely include candy, selling candy gramps to help offset the prom costs, as well as going to a nursing home for Carolyn, and also probably an ugly sweater day. Now, to move on to the survey initiative and the town meetings, I discussed these topics with Mr. Schoonover today, and the survey initiative was approved, I believe, last meeting, and I also approved it with Mr. Schoonover.
Yes, I did.
All right, so could you tell us a little more about, because we didn't actually, we deferred any action on it until you had an opportunity to weigh in with Mr. Lanzinski, and I'm not sure that it requires our approval anyway, but...
Well, Ryan explained what he's looking to do with the student council.
So, the survey initiative would basically allow student council to create surveys on topics relevant to students in the school. I showed Mr. Schoonover an example of one that would be done on Chromebooks, and ultimately, those results would be compiled and presented by the student council. And the only restriction would be that we'd have to make sure to pass by someone in administration to make sure that the survey is compliant with MasLaws.
So, I think it's a fine idea. I'd love to hear more about how the students feel about those issues. So, as I said, I'm not sure, has the administration has approved it? Maybe we could have a motion to endorse the idea.
That would be fine.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To endorse the idea.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi, and seconded by Mrs. Rothwell. Any more further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. All right, Ryan.
So, the second item proposed by student council would be a town hall-style meeting, where I have a more definitive plan on how it would go. So, there'd be one meeting in January to brainstorm different issues in each grade with decide, and then another meeting in Jan, this is with the student council, by the way, another meeting in January, and one in February to do research, and then another meeting in February, two more meetings in March, to finalize that research and actually write what will be presented. And then, in April, before it gets presented on the April 25th, school committee meeting, there'd be a dress rehearsal.
What types of issue, do you have any sense of what types of issues you'd be looking at?
Yes. I mean, I think there's a lot of issues in the school that could be covered, like, for example, some students have wanted to add, like, allow students to eat in the classroom, which would be benef, which I'm sure there'd be research that could be found that that'd be beneficial to morning. Perhaps maybe something about allowing more freedom on the Chromebooks when it comes to websites, because, like, for example, one of my friends was trying to research something and was unable to access a page from Harvard.edu. So, maybe, like, maybe a better blocking system for websites on the Chromebooks, and so just some ideas like that.
So, what do you envision as the format of this town meeting? Will it be a panel of students, or are we going to have, who's going to be invited? How is this going to work?
So, the student council would be the ones presenting the ideas, and so their proposal would basically be a summary of the research, and then some suggested solutions they found based on their research, or their own thinking.
And so, you would invite to that meeting town, the school officials, as well as administration to kind of hear about the issues and the research that you uncovered?
Right, I was hoping it would be able to be done at the school committee meeting that day.
All right, you've discussed this, and I have no objection.
I think where there's, as they begin, as Ryan, was it January, Ryan? Is that when you expect to really begin some of these meetings?
Yeah, January is when we would start to, from the process.
I think the ideas, I think the process will probably evolve over time, but having student, or student council members, those who have been voted into their positions by their peers, giving them a little bit more voice, us listening to the issues that students feel are important to them, they're doing the research, they're presenting it. I'm totally in favor of the work that they want to do, empowering them, maybe more than we have in the past, and just listening to their opinions. I see just nothing but completely, it's a positive process from beginning to end.
I just want to add that, I agree wholeheartedly. I don't, as you go through the planning process, keep us posted and certainly talk to administration, because it may warrant a meeting in and of itself. I wouldn't want you to cram all that information into one of our school committee meetings unless it fits. So, we're open to kind of listening to what you propose as you make those plans.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And are you, do you envision a written report that would be presented? The reason I'm asking is because if we're doing this at the end of April, there's not much, too much time left in the school year, particularly for seniors, as graduation approaches early in June, and I could want, you know, an opportunity to kind of, for the committee, perhaps, to address some of the issues that are raised. So, it would be good if we had an idea in advance of what the issues were, and maybe some of the conclusions that the students wanted to present, so we'd have an opportunity to prepare for the meeting, so... So, just consider that.
Okay, thank you.
So, I entertain a similar motion to endorse this process.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi, seconded by Mr. Larve. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, consider approval of Distributive Education Clubs of America, DECA, competition January 8th and 9th. We have representatives of DECA here tonight. Perhaps you could introduce yourselves, although you're no strangers to the committee.
As you may have learned by now, I'm Michael Gagliardi. This is my co-president, Guy Corrento, and Willis, we have Lawrence Patrick, who we'll be talking about. Phenomenal fundraising job that she did as well, further down the road.
A little bit of a presentation for you guys today.
Well, we're trying to make it short, we saw you guys have a lot of stuff on the agendas, we know, we're trying to keep that in mind. If this doesn't work, that's all right. It's just getting better.
All right, well, first off, we'd just like to say thank you for having us today again, because we appreciate everything, and the support from the school committee and our administration here. So, we just have this, as it loads up. And we're excited to talk to you about everything that we have coming up this year.
Unfortunately, I'm going to be there with a female tonight, that's why she's not with us, but we're more than capable of presenting this ourselves. This year, we have 119 members, which concludes of 114 competitive members and five non-competing between the grades of 10 to 12. And our numbers are a little down from last year, but last year, we did have over 60 seniors present in our chapter, which was absolutely phenomenal, and obviously, that was showcasing the success we had further down the road. We are excited, because we do have over 60 sophomores replacing the majority of those seniors, which shows that there is a new youth movement moving towards this club, and we're excited to see how it goes further down the road, although Guy and I may no longer be an official part of it, we'd love to see how this chapter grows further down the road with these brand-new 60-plus members.
And as it says, we have 114 competitive members, which means that all those students will be attending our district, state competitions if they make it further, and then the five non-competitive members are students that would still like to participate in DECA and still have that national title, that you're a member of DECA, and you can use that for scholarships and different things, and still participate in our events, but they're just students that might have had conflicts for the dates of the district competition, or different things coming up, and they still would like to be a member, so that's one of those things that we like to offer, and that National DECA likes to offer as well. All right, so we have district testing and district competition coming up. So, we'll be starting our testing for all of our competitors on Saturday. December 15th, we decided to offer a Saturday session this year, because we all know that everybody has busy schedules around this time of the year, and sometimes after-school's hard for some students, so we decided to do it Saturday, so we can open that, and that will take place at 9:30 in this building. And then we have Monday, December 17th, as well. So, DECA releases a certain timeframe that you can do the testing for this district competition, and these competitors will compete, will do a 100 multiple-choice exam in finance, marketing, hospitality, and management. And this test leading will be leading into the district competition, which will also be compiled of the two role plays, along with your test score, and that will be taking place on January 8th and 9th at Holiday Inn in Mansfield. It was the same location as it was last year, so that location accommodated all the DECA students very well. I know previously, it was at Stonehill College, and the space was just not really good for us in DECA, so the Holiday Inn in Mansfield really accommodates to us very well. There's a 10-to-1 student chaperone ratio, so that's distributed by DECA, and that's something that we like to follow as well, and I know it kind of coincides with the rules that we have here at our school, so we like to make sure that that's kind of composed of teachers. We try to not take as many teachers out of the building, and a lot of parent chaperones as well, and I know some school committee members and other officials have signed on to be judges for us as well, because every chapter within our district has to provide a certain number of judges and chaperones as well, just to meet the needs of DECA. So, we are excited to see how many of our competitors make it on to the state conference. Last year, we had 70-plus members make it on, I think it was 72. So, that was definitely exciting for us, so we're definitely looking forward to seeing how many students make it on this year.
Just to keep you guys posted on how we are fundraising, because this is, we do do a lot of fundraising for this club, it's DECA's, the business is very expensive. So, the school store continues to be successful in sales, we are always bringing in new inventory of merchandise, and it seems to be a huge hit within the halls, within the school, and I really like to see everyone in the halls wearing their SB Raiders gear. Gives me a lot of school pride, and it's nice to know that we have quality merchandise to offer our students as well. Again, half the profits go to DECA, and half the profits also go to the Students in Need Fund, which I think is a great way to kind of split... which I think is a great way, uh, to kind of split that up as well. We do have, uh, new sales coming up, uh, not only for, uh, our merchandise, but jewelry sales as well. Uh, all periwinkle jewelry that are generously donated to, donated to our chapter. Uh, our sales are December fourth, five-thirty-seven, December sixteenth, two to three-thirty, December eighteenth, five-thirty-seven. So, if any of you like to get decked out in some Raider gear, uh, come check, come check out the school store at these times. And we are looking at possibilities of always improving this school store, obviously. Uh, and, uh, looking, looking forward to different ways that we can always make it better. Uh, in addition, we will be looking further down the road on our, on the possibility of creating an online school store that provides us to, uh, place a greater inventory out there without having to buy so much in stock.
Another great thing with the school store is I know that around when we had our spirit week and we had Raider Day as one of those days, I had sent out an email to all the classes just to let them know that the school store would be open after school for them, the students, to be able to go down, purchase these things. And it was actually tremendous, and we had a lot of great sales that day. All right, so, um, Michael and myself had the pleasure to attend the Massachusetts Superintendent and School Committee Conference in Hyannis this past November. Um, Ms. Pierce, Mr. Lynch from Berkeley, as well as Mr. Giliducci, and Michael and I, and Mrs. Eyre, all got to attend this conference. So, our main goal was that, um, Massachusetts State DECA sets up a table there. Um, Donna McFadden, who is the Massachusetts State DECA advisor, sets up a table to be able to talk to school committee officials, as well as superintendents from across the state, to see if they have DECA in their district, or to see if they'd like to bring DECA into their district. So, Michael and myself, I actually got to take over the table. There's two pictures right there of us talking to some school officials. Um, and that was definitely a great experience for both of us to be able to tell them our, and share our love for DECA. So, it was kind of cool to be able to talk to them. And definitely, a lot of questions came up too of what is DECA? And our school district doesn't have it. And how is that providing us and giving us the resources to be able to actually talk to them? Have a conversation with them and share our love for this club. And it's definitely something that I'd know that we gave out a few of the pamphlets and flyers that they had to consider to bring it back to their school district. And of course, uh, Mr. Pierce took us out for lunch with Mr. Giliducci, and Mr. Lynch, and Mrs. Eyre. So, that was a great time, and it was definitely a good experience to bond a little bit.
It was a great opportunity to not only learn more about, uh, school administrators, but also make connection as well. Guy and I spoke with several, uh, leaders of, uh, nonprofit organizations interested about DECA and interested about our chapter as well. And we'll certainly be in touch with them about how DECA can do more of, uh, not only fundraising for ourselves, but giving back to charity as well down the road.
We also sat through a riveting, uh, presentation on Massachusetts Endcast Course, though. To fill some time up before we took over the, uh, the DECA table. All right, so, um, DECA had the pleasure to sponsor the Mason Stern event. That was kind of all started, um, as an issue obviously seen within our school and within our community. And today, we have Lauren Fitzpatrick, who is the event coordinator and proud senior DECA member, who, um, we have here today just to kind of talk about the stuff that she did of this event. And we're so proud of her, and we were really happy to be able to sponsor such a great event that turned out great. So, we'll let Lauren take that away.
Okay, so it's my turn. So, I'm Lauren Fitzpatrick. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a senior here. And I am, have been a member of DECA for two years, but this isn't about me. For those of you that don't know about Mason Stern, he was a six-year-old boy who was bicycling with his family on the Colt State Bike Path over the summer and tragically lost his life. So, what hit home to me was that his kindergarten teacher was also mine twelve years earlier. That really bothered me. So, when Miss Eyre went to the funeral, uh, the procession that they had where all the kids made posters, and she helped one of his best friends make a poster. She decided that DECA was gonna be in charge of the fundraiser to make sure that we raised the money. Little did I know, I would step into place. So, we found that everyone wanted a basketball tournament. For the four years that I've been here, everyone has talked about a basketball tournament. All the boys, amongst the girls, even some administration have been excited about it. So, we decided that that was a good way to put it into place. Everyone was a little doubtful at first, even Miss Eyre. She didn't exactly think that we would have enough time because six weeks wasn't a lot. But we threw it all together and ended up raising eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, when the bench was just one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So, the remaining surplus of money is about seven thousand two hundred and change. And that was amazing. And there was more than just the basketball tournament that went on. Everyone kind of had a way to grieve and find a coping mechanism through this process. Even the family came out, and the entire family, not just the immediate family, but there was about forty of them that all came and supported. They went to the cafe that we had there and the buddy board to leave messages to Mason and his family. And they donated, and we had our school store open, and it was just an overall great time. With the surplus of money, though, that leaves me with a question because a lot of people wanna know where the rest of the money is gonna be. So, the Sterns, I have been in recent contact with a lot of the time because I've grown a close bond with Mason's sisters, Madison and Miranda, and their mother and father, Amy and Bobby. They wanna know where the extra money is gonna go. They want it to go to Chase Street Schools Playground that they wanna put into place there. Whether or not that goes there, I wanna make sure that it goes to something in memory of Mason. That means something to everybody. That isn't for just everything. So, I'm asking for a committee of the Sterns. Mr. Schoenover, if you would, Mr. Plant, the Chase Street School principal, myself, and anyone else that wants to. But I just need stakeholders so that I can figure out another way to put this money into a different place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we are so proud of, um, Lauren and all her accomplishments. And to see everybody come together is just something great. And for a DECA and for Lauren to do our part and the community is definitely something great to see and to see everybody come together for such a moment. And you kind of see, I, we put some pictures here of just Chase Street parents and administration staff and all the students that came out to watch. There was honestly a lot of students that ended up coming out to support Lauren because they know all the hard work that she was going through and to support the family as well. And then some pictures of just what the, um, friends and family were writing in memory of Mason. So, it's great. Very, very happy to, yeah, to have sponsored this event.
Congratulations.
Definitely, and a round of applause for Lauren.
Uh, so we'd like to thank you for your time. However, we do, uh, we are asking for approval for our, uh, district competition, uh, January eighth and ninth. Uh, again, ten-to-one student, uh, ten-to-one student to chaperone ratio, and, uh...
Same, we're very excited and, um, any questions?
I do have a question. Do we have to, if it is a during the school day, um, field trip, we don't have to? I know we'll sanction you and wish you, wish you the best of luck. But I think as long as it's not an overnight, we don't have to approve, right?
Oh, well.
So, you, they're all easy.
Definitely, at least, uh, I feel like you guys know everything that we have coming up, for sure. And we appreciate the support that you guys provide for us. And we're super excited for the upcoming season that we have in front of us.
So, can I just ask a question though? Don't we have something, um, going on at the high school on either the eighth or the ninth?
We do. But unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, there was no way to actually adjust around it.
So, will all, um, hundred and fourteen, no?
No. Uh, it's split up based on, uh, the category you're in, so teams and...
So, it's, um, it goes teams and, um, then written projects. Well, it's actually individuals and, um, written projects will be going on the eighth. And then teams and principal categories, which is, um, pre, uh, set aside for like first-year members, um, will be going on the ninth. So, they kind of do this just to make sure that there's the, uh, the Holiday Inn can't really hold that many people because across from our entire district, we have a very large district. So, just something to be able to split those up. Obviously, for us, it's kind of an inconvenience that we have sent some competitors one day, some competitors the other day. But honestly, it's, it turned out fine last year. We had sent, um, two of our competitors last year on a different day than all of us. And it turned out fine. It kind of actually got us all excited when they advanced on to be able to see like, all right, let's go do this tomorrow and, and just kind of move on like that. I know some other districts do overnight conferences, but our district does just a two-day series conference.
And does the money that you raise in DECA cover the cost of the transportation?
It does not.
It does not?
Yeah, so, um, every single, at the start of the year, we do, um, have the fees that our students would have to pay to compete. Um, so it starts out with the, was it eighty-five or eighty this year?
Eighty dollars.
Eighty dollars this year, which covers the actual, um, DECA membership that every single student and the non-competitors would have to pay, which is twenty-five dollars. And then, the rest goes for the transportation costs and then the cost of the Holiday Inn itself and all the other things provided by the district. And, um, that's where that money would go. So, all those students are paid. And then by advancing on to the state level, all those fees for that overnight, um, trip will come into play.
The fundraising we do goes to help defray the cost of students who make it to the state and international competition because those are the, uh, those are the competitions that are much more expensive.
And we try to do send all of our students to, at least internationals for free. I know last year, uh, we only paid for our, just expenses for ourself and some of the food costs, so, that's about it. Any other questions?
So, it's, this is beyond the scope of the school committee's responsibility, but I would hope maybe some arrangement could be made so that any students that aren't present for the presentation, I mean, is it the eighth or the ninth? It's the ninth, isn't it?
We have, we have a presentation, I believe it's the eighth.
For, actually, the eighth, if it's individuals going, it's obviously not as many students from DECA out of the building, I would say. As that's one thing versus the teams, obviously, are two people. And then, it would just be the written projects, which we only have, what is it, seven or five?
We have nine people, six projects.
Nine people, six projects. That would be taken out of the building as well as the individual competitors. So, definitely on that day, so there's not as many students out of the building.
I, you're still looking for, um, judges to participate?
Yes.
And we're also, we also will be planning on holding, uh, another mock trial like we did last year. We found that was a great success. So, all of you school committee members are obviously welcome to, uh, help judge if, if you so choose so, administrators as well. Uh, we're always looking for help down the road. And it's a really, it's a really great opportunity for, as many of you know, to, uh, really see what DECA's all about.
Exactly. So, we'll be looking for that after our district competition and preparation for our state competition as well.
And when is the state competition?
Um, March...
March seventh to the ninth.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
Yep.
That is an overnight trip.
Yes, it is.
We'll require a school committee approval, so...
So, I'm sure we will be back.
We will be back.
Try, try to come to us at our January twenty-fourth meeting?
Perfect.
We'll keep that in mind.
We will note that.
And one other, one other question. The fundraising, is that done by the DECA, DECA students?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, I'm wondering if that qualifies as a student activity account?
It is.
And if it does, while certainly no, no problem with having, um, some adult consultation and advice, I think the decision as to how the money is spent really rests with the students. So, we can, we can look at that.
Yeah, most of the fundraising...
If it is a student activity account, then, um, it's really, uh, these, the students, uh, the organization, student organization that raised the money that makes the determination as to how it would be spent.
We always, um...
Subject to check or varying opinions. I think you might look at, you know, the superintendent and the principal and others as providing some direction and, and assistance, but...
That's in regards to the, the additional funding?
Right.
That was raised?
For the Mason Stern.
Oh, for sure. Awesome. That's about it for us. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, the next item on our agenda is superintendent update. Mr. Schoenover?
Okay, thank you. So, first, I wanted to, uh, mention about several retirements that have, uh, that I've received notice about just over the past several weeks. Uh, these are retirements that will, will be taking place at the end of the school year. But, uh, what makes, uh, these a little bit different is we, our Business Technology and Engineering Department is, uh, we currently have five notices of retirement, uh, for the eighteen, nineteen school year within that one, uh, department. So, just to keep the, uh, school committee up to date, uh, Mrs. Eyre and Mr. Tikzara have both, uh, informed me that they, uh, plan to retire at the end of this year. Mr. Crook is actually, uh, retiring in, uh, sometime in January, I believe is his last expected day, as well as this...
Thirty-first, I believe.
The end of January. Uh, and most recently, Mr. Caleb and Mr. Adams, the, uh, content coordinator for that department, have informed me that they, uh, plan to retire at the end of the school year. Uh, so I've accepted those letters of, uh, intent to retire. And I, I know as the school year goes on, we will officially recognize them for their years of service to Somerset, at Somerset Berkeley. Uh, we just wanted to let you know that that was happening. So, within that department, certainly following this DECA presentation, both of our business teachers, uh, have announced their retirement. Mr. Wanziski and I have, uh, talked about, uh, the impact of these, uh, retirements on the department. So, we will continue to have those conversations. Obviously, uh, DECA is such a, uh, business program, is such a valuable program to our students. But we also have, uh, we're, we're gaining popularity in other areas such as TV production, uh, computer science. So, we will be looking at, um, the existing courses and look to see what direction, uh, we will be, what changes we'll be adding. But we'll keep the committee informed, um, as, as these, uh, events occur. We've discussed, uh, in the past about the middle school shadow days. Our, our Berkeley middle school students and Somerset middle school students, eighth graders really, they've tended to come to the high school and usually after April vacation sometime, uh, and May usually. But this year is happening this week, it's been happening this week, and it's happening next week as well. Somerset middle school students have been coming this week, Tuesday through, uh, tomorrow. And Berkeley middle school students in eighth grade will be here a couple of days next week. We obviously know that we wanna, this is the time of year, our eighth graders are starting to make their high school decisions. They're visiting other schools. So, we want to make sure that they had that experience here, uh, much earlier than, uh, what they've had in the past.
How does that work? Does, does each student get assigned to a, a high school student?
Yes. Uh, our big buddies. I'm not sure if it's a hundred percent our big buddies, Mr. Wanziski.
It depends. The, the big buddies, uh, sign up themselves depending on what they have. So, some of the buddies had major tests today, so they didn't take a little buddy with them. Uh, the last thing a little buddy wants to do is watch somebody else take a test. It's as ripping as it is. So, they will sign up for each of the days. And a lot of times what they'll, uh, Mrs. Nass will allow them to do is if they know somebody who's coming with that group, they can actually request a certain individual. Uh, so that way, there's some familiarity. And then it's pretty much a one-on-one, uh, one-to-one ratio. There are times where a big buddy gets sick or something happens, and that we double up two-for-one. But for the most part, it's a one-to-one ratio, and they follow him along for about two to three hours. And then we serve them lunch here before our regular lunches at eleven o'clock, which tends to be the highlight of their day. They are fascinated by our, our student dining center and all the options. But it, it's a really great program. And early results in talking and listening to some of the kids, um, who were speaking with Mrs. Nass. She said there were three people, three young students, who said they had plans to go to Diamond, who now want to make sure they come to Somerset Berkeley. Now, they'll get home and we'll see what kind of conversation that did with parents. But, you know, that's, it's showing that moving this to this timeframe may have some beneficial effects on, on, uh, students coming over.
Okay, thank you. Next, uh, usually around this time, I, uh, inform the school committee of the superintendent's award that, uh, is given every year to our top student. The student has not received the award yet. It, it is happening next week, but yet, uh, she does know that she will be. Senior Lilly Ferrera, um, is receiving it this year. We have an, an event scheduled on Thursday at Stonehill College. Uh, and this is usually done through the South Coast Educational Collaborative. Each district is present, uh, and the, um, principal, superintendent, and student are there. Uh, we're inviting the parents this year for the first time. So, not only do they receive the award, but then the students also receive a scholarship from the South Coast Collaborative. I, and just wanting to know a little bit more about Lilly, I shadowed her, uh, on Monday. I followed her around from seven-thirty until two o'clock, uh, attending all of her classes with her. And, uh, she is a remarkable student. We started the day in graphics engineering and went through AP Euro History, AP English Literature, AP Biology, and we finished the day in AP Calculus. Uh, she has quite the schedule, uh, and is just, uh, a very quiet leader among her, uh, classes. And I was in, I believe Ryan was in a couple of those classes, uh, during the day. And it's just amazing, not just watching Lilly, but, um, all of the, the seniors, and mostly seniors who were in these classes. The, um, the level, uh, I, I informed all of their teachers afterwards, thank them, you know, for letting me tag along for the day. But the level of discussion, questioning, thinking, uh, the analyzing and that takes place in the collaboration in every single class was just amazing. I was very, very impressed with the students, with the teachers, with the level of, of, uh, instruction that, uh, that was in all those classes. Uh, then just for Lilly to have a schedule like that... Then just for Lily to have a schedule like that is very, very impressive, so I'm excited to present her next week with the superintendent's excellence award. Just a few quick events that are coming up. The World Language Department and National Arts Society hosting a Polar Express Family Fun Night on Monday, the seventeenth. So it's starting at five o'clock in the dining center. Some crafts and coloring will take place there. And if anyone wants to bring some food, they can do so at that time and then they transition to the Performing Arts Center at six o'clock for a showing of the Polar Express. And donations of a non-perishable food item or children's book are encouraged for that evening.
What's the age group?
You know, it, it's, I don't really think there's a limit as to what it is. It's not intended for necessarily high school students, I'm not sure. Ryan from the National Arts Society, do you know how young we can go with this?
I mean, I think ultimately you're right, it's for all ages. I think ultimately kids that are in elementary school or probably are the, the ones that are going to enjoy the event the most.
And what time does it start?
Six o'clock in the Performing Arts Center, crafts or five o'clock in the dining center. And there is information on the website, anyone who wants to go to somersetberkeley.org, it's one of the first things that comes up on the banner at the top of the page. On December fifteenth, we do have the wreaths across America happening again in town. Just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. This is the second time this is happening in Somerset. It takes place at noon at the World War Two Memorial in front of the Somerset Public Library. Wreaths will be placed in the graves of veterans in four of the cemeteries, starting at one o'clock. They are Gibbs, Slade, Palmer and St. Patrick's. The event that happens at noon does have music provided by Somerset Berkeley students, Somerset middle school and elementary students. And then after that, laying of the wreath there is when everyone splits up and goes to the various cemeteries around town. And we also have one more holiday event happening. It's actually this Sunday night. It's the Third Annual Holiday Festival on the Town Green. It's from five to six-thirty PM. This is in, right in front of Walgreens, the corner of Buffington and County. And we also have, as part of that, some students, music being provided by students in the district, all ages will be playing there as well.
That's the sixteenth? Or is that?
No, that's this Sunday.
No, that's this Saturday, isn't it?
It's this, this weekend.
Today's the eighth, I'm sorry. But I think it's this Sunday night?
It is.
Because there's also a gingerbread house event sponsored by the Recreation Commission at the Old Town Hall, I think from two to four.
Yes, it's Sunday, December ninth, five to six-thirty PM.
Do we know when the Vespers concert is?
I was just going to raise that. I think Mr. Skunov is missing one very important one.
You know, and I, I don't know when that one.
The sixteenth?
That's Sunday?
Sunday, the sixteenth, starting at two-thirty.
Okay, great.
You know, and I, at this time of the year, last year, there was a little bit of confusion in town about this. I just wanted to make sure that, I just wanted to inform the committee. Once the football season is over and December rolls in, we did close access to the outdoor track for December, January and February. It's because we can get some icy conditions on the track. It's not something that we are caring for. We certainly don't want people walking on the track in our early mornings, early morning hours or even five o'clock in the afternoon and come up to some icy patches and slip and fall. So we do close tho, the track for those three months. But we do have the indoor track open every night from six to eight-thirty, Monday through Thursday. The only time that the walking track is closed is when there's a home basketball game taking place. There is information about the indoor track on the website as well, somersetberkeley.org and has the calendar. Currently on the calendar are December and January and more dates will be put up soon, you know, once, once we roll into January, I'm sure February will be added to it. But just so that the committee is aware that we do close that outdoor track for those winter months.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Austin will publicize that for us.
I see him running away like crazy.
And I know Mr. Lanziski is going to talk about NIASK in a minute. I did, at a recent conference, I grabbed some of the new standards. So each of you has a book in front of you showing the latest standards by which we will be, our decennial accreditation process will be based on. So those are new from the last set of standards that you may have seen in two thousand and ten. Well, yes.
When was about two thousand and ten?
The last visit was in two thousand and ten.
Great, thank you. So the next item we have is New England Association of Schools and Colleges, NIASK update.
Lanziski? Thank you very much. So as Mr. Skunov alluded to, the process has changed and it was two thousand and ten, the last time we had our decennial visit. A little bit of background, there were a number of schools in New England, especially in Massachusetts, most of which were some of the high-powered schools who were not appreciative of the old setup of NIASK. They thought it was too prescriptive. They thought it lacked the ability for schools to really create programs for their school that fit their school instead of being cookie cutter. And after some, let's call it negotiation between NIASK and those schools, it allowed NIASK to actually take its own advice and do a self-study on themselves. And with the working with a number of schools and looking at themselves, they created this new plan. So as we were getting ready for our two thousand and twenty visit, they said to us that we're going to be one of the new groups that are going through this new process. They hit some bumps in the road and they ended up pushing us off one year, so our decennial visit will actually be two thousand and twenty-one. In preparation of this, we wanted to get ahead of the curve. So as we go through here, we created our steering committee. Our steering committee is Susan Brelford, Dr. Susan Brelford and Erica Pereira, who are our two chairs, along with myself. Our self-reflection committee is those three people along with Mr. Chris Silva from the ELA Department and Ms. Carrie McKinnon from the Science Department. We wanted our self-reflection committee to actually kind of mirror the number of standards, so we were allowed, were able to focus on each of those five standards. What Dr. Brelford, Erica Pereira, Mr. Skunov and myself also did was to volunteer to go on visits under this new system. This gave us kind of behind-the-curtain look of whatever everybody's looking for, what other schools are doing well. It also gave us four opportunities to see four other schools go through, compare our notes as we prepare. It was a great experience. I went to a really high-powered school in New England and got to see what they're doing. Got to see the wonderful things they're doing and some of the challenges that they have as well. It was really enlightening to see that sometimes with the most beautiful of outside and, you know, appearances, that sometimes there are challenges on the inside that everybody needs to work on. So the four of us have gone through. We have gotten to the point where we have created and looked at our community checklist. We have had our visit from the CPS staff. Kathy Montagno is our liaison right now from NIASK. She's formerly the superintendent of Baghdad Hobbit, so she is a familiar face and a familiar name. She has met with us and walked us through everything. She has told us that right now with our process, we're in really, really good shape. One of the steps that we have needed to do, excuse me, is start to look at our schooling community summary. So as we started to look at how we wanted to put that together, Dr. Brelford and I are planning on doing some writing together as we move forward. The accreditation budget is something that Lindsay and I will be working on. What they used to do for the old system, if you're not familiar with that, is they would have about sixteen people who would come down onto your campus, stay for four days. And you put them up and you feed them and you give them transportation, you go through that whole process. And one of the things the schools were saying was this is getting very expensive for us. What they've now done is separate this into two separate times that they come. For our visit, which will be next fall, we will end up with four people coming to visit us. One of them probably will be Kathy Montagno with three other administrators. So we're looking at the logistics, finding a place for them to stay. Usually has to have a restaurant right next door or part of a hotel, put them up. It's an overnight, it's a one-day event. So with that, going forward and talking to Lindsay as we start creating the budget, that is something that's not a traditional line item that we're going to have to put some money into to accommodate that as part of the process. So we have gone through our self-reflection checklist and to create our self-reflection report. To do this, we wanted input from the staff. Being one of the first groups to actually walk through this process, we didn't have a lot of schools to look at to have an idea on how they would do it because we wanted to start early. So we came up with our own process. So as you look through your booklets that Mr. Skunov has given you, we have our five standards. Each of your standards have kind of subsections to them. What we decided to do to try to get the teachers' input is we created what we've called vaults. Every standard is a different vault on Google. And so each of those elements that are inside of there is a different tab on a Google Sheet. And what we've asked the staff to do is they came in during a faculty meeting, they grabbed one of my magic poker chips, that randomly selected and split them into different groups. They had a content coordinator to lead them and they walked through the process of going through all the standards. They all started at a different point so that nobody was stepping all over each other. If you've ever used a Google Sheet and too many people are on a Google Sheet, it's not jumping around, mix of tough, so we split everybody up. And then we just kept rotating through. Our final day of doing this was actually yesterday at our faculty meeting. We've collected all the data that we're going to have the time to collect. We've used, I want to believe, six or seven different periods of time to collect all this data. Where there, the teachers would tell us, how does Somerset Berkeley do this? And then they write down how we do this and they put their name on the side. Why it's important for us to have the name on the side is as we go to start to write, we know to who to go to talk to to say, can I get some parts of that evidence so we can upload into the system? So we can show that we're actually doing this. So we created this system. We didn't know how it was going to work. We think it's worked very, very well. We'll know as we've shut this down today, excuse me, tomorrow, so we can start writing. Interesting part of this is as we had our scheduling, our visit of the CPS staff, Kathy Montagno had a school who was calling her on her cell phone as we were meeting, saying that they were, they were panicking because there wasn't, they didn't know how to do this, they weren't sure what to do. We showed her what we were doing. Our process has now blasted through New England. Everybody's writing to us and asking us, how do we do our format? So it's really nice to see that everybody's been really happy, especially NIASK, with how we've created this system to the point where Dr. Brelford and Mrs. Pereira will be, is planning to do a presentation at the NIASK conference in October of next year to try to help other schools and show them what we've done as a way of getting school, ah, student buy, ah, not student, but teacher buy-in and gather your data in order to be effective. So that's our plan. Like I said, we are going, we are in the process of starting to write our reflection. The five of us will write a different section. We have to get ourselves together along with our community president, we want to make sure the, the same voice comes through and do all that writing parts of it. And then what we will do is we are going to stop bringing that to different parties. We're going to bring it to our faculty. We want to be able to show them. We want to get their endorsement along with school advisory councils, well as you folks, so that we can get that all together. Of course, central office, of course, but we're going to pull it all together. Our plan right now is a little aggressive. We want to have this done. We would like to have this written and approved by everybody by the end of the school year. We don't have to have it to them by the end of the school year, but our plan is to set that up as a goal, so if something was to happen, we still have time. That if we need to scurry in the summer or right in the beginning of September, we would have that opportunity. Mrs. Montagno has said to us, as long as she gets it at least two to three weeks before our visit, she would be okay. I believe our visit is October seventeenth to the nineteenth is what they've said right now, although it could move.
Two thousand?
Two thousand and nineteen for the pre-visit. Yep, for the collaborative conference, as it is, as they refer to it now. So at that point, they'll come down and visit us. Will, they'll be, it's kind of a mini-visit. If you remember the old one, we're going to get tours, there's going to be talking to a lot of groups. It is fast. You don't have a lot of time to talk, you don't have a lot of time to do much. Mrs. Skunov, like I said, has done the same thing. It is a frantic run from seven in the morning to four at night being at the school. You run home, you run to the hotel. You get about an hour to yourself, you eat and then you write from about six o'clock to ten o'clock. Get up the next morning, be at the school at seven, go till about four o'clock and then you go home. And then what they'll do is by the time they're leaving, they will give you some feedback as far as what they've seen so far. The actual written report does take some time to come back to you. Their hope is eight weeks, but sometimes it's less and sometimes it's more. From there, they'll give you a student growth plan saying, hey, these are the things that you need to look at, these are the things we want to see grow before we come back in two years. So that's really giving you a roadmap of some of the things you should have inside your school improvement plan moving forward. So you start to fill out the reports, you go through. Decennial visit goes from having the four people at your collaborative conference to having what they're saying is eight. It may end up being less. They haven't been able to tell us, in all honesty, they say to us, we're just trying to get through the collaborative conference right now. We're not quite sure exactly how this is going to work for the decennial visits, but we're hoping it's going to work like this, so it may change as we go forward. But it will be a longer visit, three days instead of the one for the collaborative conference. They're getting rid of the Sunday. If you remember, they, the soiree, you have to throw a cocktail party on Sunday and everybody come, that part's been cut out. And we'll go forward from that. They do their visit, they give their feedback and then it goes to the, the larger committee for accreditation and decision. One of the things that they've been telling us as far as accreditation goes is you will see, if you look inside your books, they're called foundational elements. And what they have told us is that in order to be accredited, those five foundational elements need to be met. If you do not meet one of those five foundational elements, then the, the committee will probably not accredit you. The one they're giving some wiggle room to is the vision of the graduate. They're changing some of the nomenclature from academic expectations to the vision of the graduate. And they realize that nobody has done this before, so they're giving us a little wiggle room to adjust some of what we had. We were concerned about that because it's so new, because we weren't sure. So when we had Mrs. Montagno with us, you know, while she's a captive audience, we said, hey, this is what we have so far. She looked at what we had and said, you'll be able to modify what you currently have to fit what you're looking for. She said, you guys are in good shape, don't worry too much about it. So we're going to trust her and allow ourselves to sleep a little bit. So that's the process. After we get the creation decision, there will be update reports every, I believe it's three in six years, I believe is what they're saying. That could change because you start the new process on year eight to be visited again year ten. So I believe it's three, six, eight, ten going forward. So that's the process. It's, there's an old adage that I used to hear, which was, how do you eat an elephant? And you eat it one bite at a time. This is a giant pack, you know, pachyderm that we have in front of us. But as we've started and as we've gone through, it's actually been really reassuring to us because we, it, it highlights all the good things that we've been doing. And, and as we go through and we read some of the things, oh, we do this and we do this, and sometimes we don't give ourselves enough credit. Or we're just so busy that you don't take account for what's actually happening. And as you see these vaults and you see these different standards and you see the list of different types of things that are happening here in the school, it's actually uplifting. And so as one of the writers, I love that, gives me plenty of stuff to write, but we're really kind of excited. Are we expecting them to say, you guys are perfect, congratulations? No, they're not going to. We have things we need to get better at. We will always have things that we want to get better at, but it's a, it's a really interesting process. Do you folks have any questions for me?
You did say that there was, and I don't know if this is typical, I thought you mentioned there was an opportunity to get feedback from either the community or the school committee, is that in that collaborative?
So we've put out surveys. The students have done the surveys in their advisories. So we had, we've contacted NIASK. One of the cost savings that NIASK has done is they use.
One of the cost savings that NEAS has done is they used to take the survey work and give it to Endicott College, so you would pay Endicott College to take the surveys and gather all the information. Technology's a wonderful thing, Google, things like this, it does it automatically. So now that's free and we have access to the survey as much as we want. So if we can keep re-giving these surveys year after year, to chart our progress if we want to. So we've handed it out to the students, they did during advisories. Part of, one group did it before they went to credit for life in October. The other group did it in, try that again, November. Teachers did it in those advisories also. We put it out to the parents about three times. I didn't really want to shame the devil in my newsletter, but I felt like I needed to. That out of the thousand and forty-one students we have, we only had twenty-three parental responses. And to be fair, you need about thirty percent to make that ballot.
Can I make a request?
Sure.
I got mine and I saw it and it was great. Is it possible, and I know that this might be added work, but because we get so many emails as parents, is it possible to maybe give a heads up with a one call? To say that you're gonna be expecting a survey that we need you to complete for NEAS?
I think I did.
Oh, in a one call, like on the phone?
No, I did an email one call.
Right.
You want a phone?
I'm wondering on the phone.
We can, we can try. Here's my problem is, I need that data to start writing. So what I can probably do is I'll try to have that go out tomorrow. I told everybody in the email that it was closing tomorrow because we need to start writing next week. But I can put that out there and try to close it on Sunday when I go see.
Because I would imagine that there's a fair percentage of parents that if they know the importance of the survey, that would get on it. Because I know I completed it and it takes no time at all. I mean, it really is a five-minute survey.
Thank you for being one of the twenty-three.
But no, really, but I think if parents realize in the one call what it's for, you know, it's aggregate data that we're collecting and it's five minutes and we need your help, I think, I think you'll get a response.
I hope so. We're trying, it's just, to be honest, it's a little embarrassing. You know, it's the first thing NEAS is seeing about our community. They're recognizing, okay, you've got a thousand kids, you've got over eight hundred kids who are doing the survey, you have about eighty-five, ninety staff, you have about seventy-five of them responding. Okay, so they're all doing it and you have all those, it just looks bad.
But they don't know that yet. We have a ton to redeem ourselves.
Yeah, 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 we do. And we need to make a, you know, a push and make a weekend run at this, but. My only thing is I'm gonna need it by Sunday, this Sunday. So that's why, we'll do the, we'll set up the one call and have that go out that way.
Can you put the survey link on a landing page? Or do you have to have it, do you have to have it directed in an email? And the reason I ask is because if you had a survey link reside on the website and we could direct parents to it, we could push them to it as opposed to having to receive it via email, but I don't know if that's possible.
So one of the things they said to us was to be wary about putting it on a website because anybody can then click on it and go versus on something that you're directing straight to parents.
Yep. So you mentioned parents, who we're gonna try to, some of us will do it. Parents, students, faculty members. What about, I'm just, I'm not familiar with it. Is there an opportunity for community perceptions of the school or they don't even ask for that?
They haven't asked for that part yet. There's like a segment of the visit that will be community members, but not the survey part.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just wanna thank you. I appreciate the process and explaining that to us. And you're right, there's a lot of work. So if the one area that we can help is getting you the data that you need from parents to help with this report, then we'll shake the trees.
Data and the budget, that's the two I can use some help with. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item that we have on the agenda is to, an update on identifying and supporting struggling students.
So I kinda like the background on the slide, so you'll see the same kind of background. I've got a little, you know, attached to it as it loads up. So, as we know, the state has kinda changed some of its formatting and how they wanna look at some of the data and how they wanna look at schools. And they're reported as the lowest twenty-five performing in your schools. And so we wanna talk a little bit of what we've seen, what we do, and how we help kids that fall into that range. Being the first year, we're limited to the groups that we actually have information about. So the information that we have is our current sophomores. But as far as how it connects to state testing, the only state testing that's going on with that has been their science testing. So, as we go through, every school has a lowest twenty-five percent, no matter who you are. Interestingly enough, when you think about what that really means, there's kind of a connotation in there that low twenty-five percent means they're not doing well. And it's a really, for lack of a better term, a fear tactic used to try to rustle up some attention to it. Some schools have a lower twenty-five percent in which the high majority of actually advanced or proficient. The school I visited had just about every single one of their students in their low twenty-five was advanced or proficient. But yet their state will tell you that they are their low twenty-five. There are other schools in the state in which their low twenty-five is all failing and yet they have a large number above that that's still failing. So that low twenty-five number is really based on fear and doesn't necessarily accurately depict what's going on from school to school. I get it, DESI is a large organization, they've got a lot of schools, it's a lot of things they need to, different people they have to deal with, but they painted kind of with a broad brush. And when you do that, it really doesn't fit the needs of everybody, but we're gonna try to make it work because that's the situation it is. So let's talk a little bit about us. Our lowest twenty-five percent is the class of twenty-twenty-one, our sophomores. And using the state analytics, what we call Edwin. There's about sixty students that were identified in this population from last year. So when we look at some of the indicators from that, sixty-two percent of those are male, thirty-eight female, we didn't have any reported as non-binary. Special education of those, forty-two percent were special ed, eight percent five oh four, eighteen percent Title I, produce is twenty-five percent of them. And I went back and did some of the research on our low twenty-five. Their average absences are almost twelve absences. If you think back to our attendance policy, the magic number is twelve. After twelve, you lose your credit. So these are the kids who are right on that border. If that's an average, that means about half of them or so are actually beyond that. Again, only MCAT scores they're really dealing with are their science MCAT scores and only twenty percent of the low twenty-five received a failing score on the MCATs. So even though they're considered our lowest twenty-five, they still passed, okay? Which is a really good sign.
So again, just based on what you said in that first part. Sixty students, we're gonna always have sixty students in our low twenty-five.
If there's two hundred and forty kids in a class, your lowest twenty-five will be these sixty students. Where they are on the success continuum may shift.
Right, so I think it's important that people understand that that number is never gonna drop.
Correct.
It's just the makeup of that group may change. And what we wanna do is make that group as successful as possible.
We would, we would love to get to that group so that everybody's advanced and proficient, even though they are low twenty-five.
Well, and I also think it's an important discriminator to also say that when we talk about our lowest twenty-five, that doesn't immediately equate with failure.
Correct, absolutely. You know, and for me, looking at the numbers, and of course, I can't go into particular kids, but I'm watching some of those kids who are identified as low twenty-five, who took that science test and received scores of two forty-four, two fifty-six, that they actually did well on those tests and went through it. So it's interesting to watch that whole thing play out and to see what we've been able to do in the short amount of time to already start getting those kids to a more successful place.
And just so that, for those people who don't know, or the two forty-four, two forty-six, that's out of?
So what happens is for failing is two twenty. So you wanna get over the two twenty bar for science and then at the next bar is two forty, two sixty, two eighty. And for math and for ELA, you wanna get over the two forty bar. If you're between two twenty and two forty, there are some extras, you have passed, but there's some extra steps you need to do in order to get your diploma. But for science, they don't have that. So when we talk about identifying and supporting our struggling students, we have a lot of different data points that we're using. We're using our unit assessments, our midterms, our final exams. Every single one of our sophomores and juniors that are here that come to school that day, take their PSATs. We are looking at SAT data for those of who take those SATs, which a lot of our students do. We run a DNF report through Aspen that will tell us how many students have received a D or an F. And we kinda drill down a little bit more on that, I'll talk more about that as I move forward. Teacher assessments, what do the teachers see? What are the teachers observing in the classroom? What have they found, what are they going through? As far as observations, but also their particular test, their formative test. Hey, as we're going through, I'm doing a check-in as we're going, how are students doing? And also using some of our software applications, especially for our Title I groups, that will do these testing like Lexia and some of the other programs that are out there, just to give us some real good data to make some decisions on what to do for each kid. Who uses the data points to make decisions? Well, it's our special ed department. When there's gonna be a meeting for special ed, this is all the data that's collected so the team can make an informed decision. Same thing for five oh fours. So a lot of times there are teacher assessments that go, "Well, we wanna find out how are students doing? Is this a knowledge issue where they don't understand something? Is this, they're not doing things in?" What are the different aspects of why that grade is where it is and how can we address it? How we address a student who is struggling because they're having a difficult time with the academics is very different than the kid who is a very bright kid who just isn't turning things in. And so we wanna make sure that we are addressing the needs of each child to motivate them and get them to where we need to be. Title I coordinators, look at how can we get kids into special programs to get them the supports they need in ELA, math, and in science. Content coordinators use this, especially when we're talking about courses and how to design courses, how to put kids in, whether a kid should move from one course to another course. A lot of times, this is really critical for us to look at this stuff when transfer students come in from other places. It really gives us the information of where should we be placing them so they're gonna be successful with us. Student Success Team, formerly known as Intervention. We're still working on getting that name to stick, we still go back and forth. That's an important team. That's our group who are made up of myself, both assistant principals. Sorry, I have to kinda visualize the table as I walk or go around. Two school adjustment counselors, school nurse, SRO, head of guidance, Kathy Voya, head of special ed, and usually there's an intern or somebody has an intern who's also there. And this is really the group who gets together and students are brought to our attention either by guidance counselors, by teachers, by, could be a staff member, could be a cafeteria worker. Something's going on with a student and this is where we can really look at and pull together. We throw out a name. I always use my daughter. Couple of years, I can't do that, she'll actually be in the school. Okay, we're gonna bring Julia Lansiski. What do we know about Julia Lansiski? And the nurse will say, "Well, I see Julia every once in a while, I know she's got this going on. I know that this student has this going on, I know that they're struggling in class, I know they had a problem with this child." And then we can get a really good picture of that student to say, "Okay, let's really pull up their grades." So we sit around a table with one of the projectors, we pull up their Aspen, we'll look at what grades are they struggling with? Why are they struggling? Oh, look, they haven't turned in any homework, but look, they get nineties on every single test. Okay, so what are the techniques that we use for that? And so we go through and then have discussions. Sometimes it's kids with IEPs, sometimes it's kids with five oh fours, sometimes it's kids who are Title I. But it allows us to really look at what the needs are for the students, both academically and socially emotionally also. Sometimes the recommendation is the student's not doing well in their class because they're really stressed out. And so sometimes getting them into a school-based counseling is what relieves some of that stress to allow their grades to go up. And then we will check back in on them to see how that's going every so often. Just to make sure that if there's additional supports that are needed, that's great. If the support we put in isn't working, what else can we do? Or just check in, they say, "You know what? Take away the support, I wanna see if I can do this on my own." And that's the ultimate goal, is to be able to support them while they need it, let them build the strength and the skills and then move from there. Guidance department is also using all this information for course recommendations and just dealing with the kids about colleges and where they wanna go and what their next plans are. You know, a large amount of our kids go to college, but not all of them. You know, I had a young lady in my office today who is in between whether to go to BCC or go into the military, and family is both in the military. And talking about, you know, what does she wanna do with her life? Where does she wanna go? And having the conversations about where she is academically, where her strengths are, what she wants to do, what she wants to see, you know? And having her be able to have the total picture of herself, that maybe she doesn't get there by herself. Because ultimately, she's the one that needs to make that decision. We can't tell her, her parents can't tell her. So it's really interesting to share that with them. Teachers and administration, we are always looking at these types of things to make sure that the rigor in the courses are where they need to be, make sure the supports are there for where they need to be. This is an area, when we look at, for example, mid-year exams, is a perfect example. The staff will look at all their mid-year exams and see if there was a common question that everybody got wrong. Why did they get that question wrong? Was it the question? Was it the way we worded the question was ambiguous and caused a false answer? Was it that we're not covering this well enough, that we're not instructing this well enough? Let's change that. So that's going to how we're really using this information to help the struggling students. If we find that these kids are really having a hard time, let's change how we're doing it to really get them what they need. So students who are struggling, I don't wanna use the low twenty-five because I think it's a misnomer, but students who are struggling with us, we have a lot of different supports that we have in place. We changed Homework Club to Academic Support. Why? Because when you said, "Why don't you go to Homework Club?", we get the, "Well, I don't have any homework." Not the point, we wanna give you support and have teachers there to help you, so we changed the name to Academic Support. We're actually looking to expand that hopefully for next year. We have four different subjects, math, ELA, science, and social studies. I want to be able to bring in world languages. We used to have that. Due to budgetary reasons, it was cut, but I'm finding now that we need that. We're seeing students that are struggling in world languages to offer that day once a week that they can come in. And we have teachers who are dual-certified in both languages. Great opportunity for them to help kids along and do that. Literacy across the curriculum is a course in which we identify, it's one of our Title I courses. And we identify students from the eighth grade who are struggling readers or writers and we have them go into that course in addition to their ELA class. It's also where our Ls will end up, to allow them to help with their communication skills. Math applications is sophomore course, looking at their eighth grade scores on MCATs. If they fall within that danger zone, we automatically put them into that course to help them pass the MCATs test. That has been going on for probably fifteen to eighteen years, you know, and it's been very successful for us. Science review is the same type of idea. All three of these kind of do the same thing. We can get kids into this course, get them some help with some of the material that they are doing, and move on from there. We've also run in the past Saturday support courses, vacation support courses, summer support courses to help in get kids in. The kids refer to them as the Six Flag programs because sometimes when they finish those courses, the reward is if you come to all the courses, we will take you to Six Flags, you give them a little carrot, you drag them in, and it's been working for us. Flex is our after-school program. There are times where students who are struggling, especially as they get older. There are times where students who are struggling, especially as they get older, students who maybe weren't as successful when they were younger, we will put them in Flex to gain some extra credit, to catch them up on some things, to strengthen their skills. So they'll either, they'll come for the school day and then stay for the hour and a half after school to build their skills, to get stronger as we go forward. Alternative classes, sometimes the students need a smaller setting than the twenty-six, twenty-seven that are in a room, and the alternative classes allow us to focus and really individualize the tailor the needs of each student to help them continue to progress. So sometimes it's using agenuity, sometimes it's not. But it's a good program for students that haven't been successful, that are having a hard time, and used for a lot of different reasons. Sometimes alternative classes are for students who are, for example, school phobic. Let's talk about school phobic kids for a second. Our school phobic kids could be some of these struggling students. They're not coming to school, they don't want to leave the room, they don't want to leave their bed. And as Tracy Maderas do a wonderful job, as long with Kathy Boya, getting these kids back out of their house and out of their room. So what will usually happen is we get them to step back in and have them start in Flex, where they're coming for one and a half hours a day, just get into the building, just come in. Then what will happen is we'll get them into a schedule with alternatives so they don't, they're not put in a room with thirty kids right off the bat. Keep a slow room, small room, let's catch them up, because now it's probably some point in the middle of the year. So now we can kind of catch them up so that when we put them back into a regular course, they're not behind. Because the last thing we want to do is take a kid who's already nervous about being in school, just drop them in the middle of a course who's been running for eight, ten, twelve, fifteen weeks, and they don't have that background knowledge, they're going to get frustrated, and they're going to go right back. So we use those programs for that. And just keep working through. School-based counseling, that has exploded. We are constantly looking for more counselors, and we're finding that a lot of the kids who are struggling have these impact influences from outside of the building that are not allowing them to focus on what they're doing inside the building. We may actually be their best six and a half hours of the day, but when you're going through some of the things that they're going through, it's tough for you to get them to learn about slope. So sometimes the best thing for us to do is to get them those counselors who are phenomenal individuals, piece them back together, give them those skills, do some cognitive therapy, and get them back in the classroom. And we've seen success with those kids. Summer school and summer's a perfect way to evening school. We partner with them to help kids who are struggling. A lot of the times, you know, classic summer school, if you don't pass a class or you fall within a certain range, we have you go to summer school, remediate your skills, and allow you to move on. What we also do with the evening school is we have worked with them and set up a system where if you are a senior and you are struggling, and maybe you made a mistake when you were a freshman, and you lost some credits, and you are being successful your first semester of your senior year, and you need two more courses in order to graduate on top of what you have, we will allow you, and Mr. Agar works with them, to allow them to take those two courses at the evening school that second semester so that they can graduate on time. We also use the summer school where if they've gone through the school year and came up a little bit short, they will go to the summer school, do some remediation, and they will still get their diploma by mid-August. One of the things that we're looking to put in next year is peer tutoring. We're going to, with how our schedule is changing and how we're going to be reworking some of the studies, there's an opportunity there that I perceive to do some peer tutoring, which helps everybody. It will allow the students to get their tutoring needs, and it will allow the tutors to get some community service hours. So it's a win-win for everybody. So how do we know if this is working? So when you look at the DNF report and you start to really dig deeper, I looked at the number of students with multiple failures. Okay, how many kids failed more than one class, term one this year? Which is why I needed to wait for the term to end. For our freshmen, it was thirty-six students. For class of twenty-twenty-one, it was eighteen. Because we have that data on the low twenty-five, thirteen of those twenty-eight were in that low twenty-five. So it's not all of those kids who came up with the two fails, which is showing us that those kids that we knew were in the low twenty-five, that we've always been putting supports in anyway. We didn't need the state to tell us, we knew they were struggling, and we put them in support. It's working because they're not all there. Juniors are eleven, seniors are twenty-three. So I will say to you that I see that as a declining trend, and the question will be, so why is the senior one go up? We call that senioritis in the first term. Everybody thinks they're already moved beyond, and what happens at that point is Dr. Relford this year has already had meetings with all of her seniors who are on a borderline on whether or not they could graduate, or kids who are failing, and she met with head of guidance, their guidance counselor and herself, and has walked through that and gotten parents on the phone to already talk about, hey, look, this is your situation, let's go through this, this is what you need, so that everybody's well informed about what is needed going forward. Student and graduate feedback. If you want to know what's going on with the school, as you guys have kind of alluded to earlier, and Ryan alluded to earlier, ask the student. So we talked to some of our transfer kids, especially kids who have come from one high school and transferred into ours. One of the trends we see, and Mrs. Coogan could speak to this, I know she's coming to a later meeting, is students who come in from other schools will have their grades on their transcripts, and they will, you know, maybe very, very good. You know, they're getting As, Bs. And so the expectation is, I'm going to walk in here from a private school, and I'm just going to do phenomenally. And what's happening is they have a tough, let's call it transition, where all of a sudden they're getting their first C they've ever gotten, and maybe a D, in those first six to eight weeks. And it has less to do with the bricks and the mortar and moving and not knowing kids. They're telling us, we never had to do this much work, this type of work in our old school. So what they're telling us is our rigor is stronger than where they came from. So there is that point that they have to work through it and get through it, and then they eventually get their grades, they always end up with their As and Bs and do that. The most gratifying part is when we talk to our graduates. One of the things that happened in that case rally beyond the actual event and all that glory that it is, is a lot of our graduates come back. And if you sit and you watch it at the end, you just see the hugs between the kids who have graduated and their teachers. And Mr. Petty, who we all know and love, shared a story with me actually today about a young lady who came back and talked to him, and she's at a pretty good school, and said to her, you know, I went in my class and I was nervous, it's my first college class, I didn't know what to expect, and I was sitting there, and I looked around, and I realized, wait, I'm the most prepared person in the room. And the next thing you know, within a week, I had lots of friends, because people wanted to sit near me because I knew what to do, I knew how to organize, I knew how to do this. She's like, I didn't realize when I left here how prepared I was for my next level. And she really appreciated that. Young lady, you might know her, Kara Canus, University of Georgia. She shared that with us. I've heard that story over and over and over again, not just at University of Georgia or high-end schools, kids are going to Bridgewater. You know, hey, you know, it's great to see them, and they come, they give you a hug, you know, high five, and they say, you know, how's the classwork going? How are you making out with your academics? And they're like, you know, I'm killing it, and my friends around me are failing, and they don't know why. And I didn't realize until I got out of here how well I'm prepared. So it's that kind of data that's not numbers, but it's really why we're here. I think, for me, anyway, I think sometimes we get a little lost about our purpose, and we see the stage that we stand on on June as the finish line. It's not. We are not a finish line. We're not a finish line for our kids. What we merely are is a starting line. If you think about the Boston Marathon, we are Hockington. What we're doing and all the work that we're putting in is all those one mile, two mile, three mile, five mile, ten mile runs you do to make sure that when they take off, they can do that marathon. If you don't do your job to prepare, those hamstrings are going to hurt on Heartbreak Hill like you don't know. And so sometimes when you think about what the feedback is from students, and they say, you know, I was getting all As from where I was, I went to this private school, I went there, and I was getting all As and Bs, when you look at our transcripts, maybe some of those other schools, their transcripts look a little better? Because there's no way of normalizing to make sure everybody has the same experience. I don't worry about that. When they get to the school that they're going to, are they being successful? Are they ready? Are they staying there? That's what we're here for. Are we doing very beautiful ceremony, sometimes inside, sometimes outside? It's a great event, it's an accomplishment. Our society has changed, we're not ride-al-hide, you know, this isn't Greece. We know kids are going on to another level, and just giving them our piece of paper is not good enough, making sure they're ready it is, and I feel like we're doing that. When you really look at our most important statistic from last year, in the class of two thousand and eighteen, only one student did not receive a diploma by mid-August. That's it. Now, there was a low twenty-five with that group when they walked in. And some of that low twenty-five were struggling students. Some of that struggling students were kids who failed classes. Failure is not a bad thing. Failure teaches us how we got to get better. And yet, what we have, what we do, all the hard work the teachers do, and the dedication they put in, and the programs we run, we make sure kids get there. And we've been doing that for year after year after year. We just try to make sure that we're making sure each kid is getting the programming and the support that they need versus the broad brush that we talked about earlier. So that's how we're identifying and supporting our struggling students. As I said, we've been doing it for years. It's not me, it's the teachers. It's the hard work, it's the struggle, it's the meeting with parents, it's the communication with everybody, it's a lot of moving parts. And every child is unique. There is no template for this. There is no, you have this type of child, do these five things, and that's going to solve that. Everybody comes with a different story, and not all of them are sunshine roses and unicorns. And so we need to make sure we figure out how to do that. Sometimes with that, there's protocols and timeframes that may seem longer than people would like, but we'd rather get more data to make a one informed decision versus do a knee-jerk reaction in a small amount of time and cause more of a problem because we addressed it the wrong way. So that's why it doesn't always happen as fast as people would like, but we want to make sure we do it well. Are there any questions?
So I think that this, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So this chart in particular gives us one data point and compares the different grade levels. Not obviously, but you know, as we start to focus on this particular population, I think it might be interesting from my perspective to see, your first slide showed the makeup of that group, twenty-five percent. It would be interesting to see the makeup of that group in each of those grade levels as that group changes, you know? So we've identified the group this year, so let's look at their, that same group, what their data points are next year.
Right. And as we move forward, the state keeps identifying next year's classes, group of twenty-five.
Right.
We'll be able to compare. It's a little tougher, I get nervous comparing class to class. It's apples to oranges, it's not the same kids, but we will be able to track them, and at some point, for these kids, is be able to say, okay, when they're down here in their seniors, they started at thirty-six, it went to twenty-four, it went to twelve, it's back up to eighteen due to senioritis. But, you know, we'll be able to look at that kind of data as the years progress.
And I'm, just one other point, I think you spoke anecdotally about the experience that our graduates are having after leaving here, and I think the superintendent has talked about the difficulty in getting real data, you know, how they're managing at school. You know, it's hard to know how many of our graduates actually drop out of college for, for academic reasons after so long. But if there's a way that we can track that, that would be interesting. I have heard the same anecdotal information from people who, from individuals who graduated in the last couple of years who've said they were well prepared. But it would be nice to see it more concretely.
I agree with you, it's a tough step to get.
Yeah.
And sometimes the colleges aren't necessarily all that cooperative with wanting to give you that data because they almost take it as a knock on them. Why a student left them, why are you taking that as we didn't support them well enough? So sometimes they're not the most cooperative about giving that data out, could be asked. But we work on it. Some of the things, it's, I don't want to say that every student who comes back gives us great feedback. You know, some of them have said things like, they've been out two years or three years, and they say, I wish I would have had a computer science program class. Okay, you're right, absolutely. We do have that, by the way, we're expanding. Oh, you really are? Yes, I wish, you know, so that's, things that we are hearing from them that we know they need, or they want, or they wish they would have had, we are adding to what we're trying to build here also. And trying, it's why we're looking to modify our curriculum and what we offer to really meet the needs of society.
Can I ask a question?
You can.
The data point you're using is that students that actually leave, if they go on to the university or. We had some feedback from a previous meeting where we found that some of our students were going to community colleges or various colleges, and there were certain classes such as math where they needed extra classroom time to meet the standards for medical, specifically to math. So that type of data point, maybe they're not leaving the university or the community college they're going to, but if there were certain subjects that they were struggling in, then that would be good feedback for us to have as well.
Right. And we talked, we had a meeting earlier this year with BCC, I forgot when that was, I want to say October-ish, in which they, they're also looking at their internal programming on how they use their testing, because they're finding that certain students are failing those placement testing, but passing courses that beyond that. So they're looking at their test, that maybe the test that they're using to say that they're not doing well enough isn't accurate, isn't valid.
The Accuplacer, is that what it's called?
Yes. So the Accuplacer says that they're not, they're not at the level they need to be, but yet the students take the class that they need to take, and they're passing it.
So their assessment test is.
Might be faulty. And so they're looking at whether or not that's a good tool, if they're going to continue to use that, develop their own, or something to that effect.
But you could argue that if it's an assessment test, wouldn't that be a standard assessment test across all colleges? But yeah, just like we have teachers in every educational institution that might read easier than other teachers. I think I would probably weigh a little more couple down on standardized testing.
What I've heard is that some, there are individuals, we see it, I would imagine you see it in your classrooms, there are kids who test really, really well consistently, but they won't do the homework, or they don't, you know, they don't do the day-to-day thing. So they will nail their SATs, they'll nail their MCAS, but they, their grades on Aspen don't reflect that. Conversely, there are kids who will do very well in the day-to-day subject, taking those intermediate assessments, working with the, doing the homework, but when you put them on a standardized test, they just don't perform. And so I think that's what they are finding. So it would be nice to have that kind of standardized measurement.
Right, and that's what they're using for Accuplacer, but in our own high school version of that, which we call MCAS, we're getting all our kids to pass. We're getting all our kids there. So my question is, if they can pass the MCAS test, because they are, because if they didn't pass, they wouldn't be graduating. So if they're able to pass the MCAS test, why can't they pass the Accuplacer? Is that saying that the MCAS test is not tough enough? Could be an answer. Is the Accuplacer not valid for what it's questioning? Is it a different type of question? There's an SAT question versus an MCAS question versus an Accuplacer question are three different types of questions. So we're focused on making sure kids are passing MCAS-type questions. The Accuplacer questions may be set up in a very different style, and the kids just aren't accustomed to it. So now if you're a student who struggles on tests and are taking it, and all of a sudden the questions don't look necessarily like the ones we want. sudden the questions don't look necessarily like the ones we want, you get a little bit more anxiety, you know, and, and we start to struggle with that. One of the things, going back and just personalizes a little bit, when I taught my seniors as a math teacher, and I was a Level Two teacher, those weren't the kids going to Harvard. They were going to your Bridgewater's and that. My first day in their class was, listen, this isn't about my class. My goal for you is, whether you know it or not, you're gonna go for an orientation, and they're gonna show you where the CAF is, they're gonna show you all this great stuff, and then they're all of a sudden gonna shove you in a room and you're gonna take a math test, and you're not gonna see that coming. My goal is to get you to take that math test because I want you to take that, pass that so that you can take some other course other than some math course that they're forcing you to take cuz they don't feel you have the skill. And they bought into that for a while, and then they would start to doubt it until the first student went for an orientation. And they would come back into the class inevitably every year, "He ain't kidding, I had to take that math test. I think I did pretty good, but he's not lying." And then all of a sudden, I had everybody's attention to see the year for the end because that's the big push. And so sometimes, looking at our clientele, looking at where they're going, where those students wanna go, being able to try to meet those needs and just make them aware that that stuff is going to happen can help.
So, yeah, I have a few questions. So you mentioned Tara Kimmels, right? Great kid. Was she, she was top of the class, right? Was she the one?
She was the number one.
No, but, so, so she was one of the top students though, right? And I think one of the things that Somerset Berkeley does really well is they, they take their, their well, or high-performing students and, and get more on. So when you use a reference like Kara, absolutely, I think some of the kids at that level get into college and they do well. They are prepared, right? But this discussion is about the bottom twenty-five on struggling students. And, and over there you have the most important statistic, right? It's basically, hey, everybody except one kid received a diploma by mid-August. So there's a difference between doing very well in college and just basically graduating, right? So I, I think the, the concentration here is those kids that are just barely graduating, that are, you know, doing everything they can, taking summer classes, they're, you know, doing what they can, and they're just barely doing that. And so there's the bottom twenty-five. And like you, like you mentioned before, there was one of the high-performing schools where their bottom twenty-five, they're all proficient or they're all passing. So my question is with the Somerset Berkeley students, where does our bottom twenty-five fall as far as the MCAS rate?
So when you look at not, for the most part, most of our kids are in the needs improvement or are proficient. There is a group of them that are in the failing range. When you go back, for this group of students, the only MCAS data that's, we've been done yet was when they were in ninth grade, which is the science. So when we go back to here, only thirteen of those twenty-eight are kids who are in the failing range of, for science. So there are a lot of those kids that took that but are being more successful and being able to move forward.
So, so, but we also look at their eighth-grade MCAS.
I was gonna say, eighth grade, they would have science as well.
But this, but what they do is, for us to get our, our data, that's the class that they gave us from that, that supplies those numbers.
Okay, so those sixty, that group of sixty, because they are in that group of sixty, do they automatically qualify for any accommodations?
Not because they're in that group of sixty, because of other, other factors that go into it. For example, we'll identify them for Title I. We'll identify them for math applications.
How do you identify them for Title I?
That usually, for Title I, which usually has to do with their eighth-grade scores on MCAS, teacher recommendations from the middle schools. I can tell you math applications goes by their MCAS scores from the eighth grade, so if they fall within that range of failing, we put them automatically in. So it's not a course that they can select, it's something that's automatically put in their schedule their sophomore year.
So they don't do well, eighth-grade MCAS math scores, so you put them in a math applications course when they're sophomores?
We do, yes.
What happened to freshman year?
Because there, we're trying to get them acclimated to the math that we have there, and they're getting that support course just before. The reason for that is, in math or your MCAS, it's two different topics. It's algebra, it's geometry. What we end up doing is, we end up making sure that in the math applications that second year, they're going back over those algebra skills because they're doing the geometry stuff. So that's fresh in their mind in their courses. We wanna make sure that algebra stuff is reviewed so that when they take the test, they haven't forgotten from the year before. Because geometry and algebra are very, very different. We would love to be able to get to the point where we can offer that type of course for two straight years. We're gonna have to increase the teachers.
Okay, so I guess one of the things that I'm struggling with, I struggle with a lot of things. But when, when we talk about the bottom twenty-five, we, we basically identify sixty students, right? But that doesn't matter because those sixty students are based on a very small data point, right? Essentially just the MCAS scores, right? So if we really wanna identify the students that are struggling, you can use that as, as a data point. But the true data points is how they're doing in their, in their classes on a, you know, on a daily, weekly semester, all that. So you, so you mentioned that you had to wait until the semester was over to run a DNF report.
Correct.
Right? Don't you run that DNF report on a pretty frequent basis or only at the end of the semester?
No, because it's not gonna give you enough. We run it at the end of the term, not a semester. So we do that because of that. Terms of four, semesters or halves of a year. So we run that after the end of the term because that's when all the degree to compile, that's giving us a good snapshot. If we start doing it too early, you're not getting a good visual of what's actually happening in that room. You need enough data points to make a valid decision on how to help the student. But if there are students who are struggling, who are really struggling in those first few weeks, there's a couple of things that happen. Teachers will recommend to us through SST, hey, I have a student who's really struggling. Teachers are very in tune about, especially the first few weeks of school, is somebody severely struggling in my class? Is this the right course for them? Sometimes kids are taking courses or recommended to take courses that are maybe at a different level than they're necessarily prepared for, and so sometimes that's where we allow that movement to help them because they're not appropriately placed. Other students, it's, it's, let's look at why you're there, have those communications. That's why parent-teacher night is so important, for us to have parents come in and talk to us and talk to teachers about, hey, I've noticed they're struggling, I noticed this is where it's going, we really wanna try to help them. We also have them come down to us, like I said, for SST and say, can we talk about Julia Lanziski, what's going on there? I find that she's struggling in my class. Is it just my class or is it other classes? We can start looking at all of that and say, you know, listen, it's, it's really around math in which she's struggling, you know? Or, okay, this is across the board. Why is it across the board? What is it about what we can see? Now, there's not a ton of data, but we can try to find trends. And then that would allow us to, to meet and look to see, is this a kid who's already on a plan? All right? If it's a kid who's in special ed, then maybe that becomes, we need to have an update meeting. And Kathy Buller's in the SST meetings, and she can start looking at that and scheduling that to relook at the team and what the adjustment is to the school. If it's a 504, the 504 coordinator's in that SST meeting. So she can make that determination that we want an update. If they're in Title I, that's something we can talk to the Title I coordinators about. If it's a student who's not on a plan at all, then guidance is there, and we can have those communications and talk, what's going on here, what's happening with them? Why don't we talk to the parents and see what's going on?
So, so you speak in a lot of general terms, right? Like we, we identify students, we have discussions about them. So there's a thousand students in the school. The, the scenario that you mentioned, right, is, well, we identify a student and we talk, talk about that student as a team to see if they have issues across, you know, different classes. How do you do that for a thousand students? Right? Not, not only that, when you say that, that teachers are reaching out to parents when students aren't doing well, the beginning of the year and, and, you know, like throughout the year, there are some teachers that do that, absolutely, but there are others that don't. And, and I think unless you have absolutely hard metrics that say, little Johnny was, you know, doing okay first semester, second, sorry, second term, he failed, like if you're not looking at that data, all the generalization you're making, I, I don't see how that's helping the students. And before you, you, you speak, the other thing too is, the process to take a, a student that's struggling and identify if they have any needs, whether they need to be on a 504 or on an IEP, I'm sorry, but that process is not as robust as you think it is. So when I, when I look at, at everything that you have here, and I know that you have some good stuff going on, but I, but I gotta tell you, the numbers, you have data points every day. You have Aspen, and I remember in the summer, you said Aspen didn't really have any reports. You have a DNF report there. I strongly encourage the school district to find a way to get DAFT board reporting so you're not looking at different intervals. You can actually see what's going on with students on a day-to-day basis. Because if parents can look at Aspen, so can administrators.
We can. We're gonna need some more staff. If we're gonna be looking at all...
We're fully staffed.
Okay, wonderful. So my guidance department, and we'll be tripling, quadrupling the guidance department to be able to get the numbers, to be able to do all of that. We would love to. I don't, we don't need to look at a thousand kids because not a thousand kids are struggling. We know that. We wanna focus our attention to the kids who need our services so we can really help those students out.
Can I, can I just, you, you can go back to your questions, but I had a question that sort of follows that same course, which is, if a parent comes to the theoretical me or anyone, or the superintendent, and says, it's the end of the quarter and I just found out or realized that my child has been, has failed two or three courses or has gotten D's and an F. Am I correct? Well, who's, who's gonna ask, aside from an IEP or something like that, there's no formal plan in place. If a student's been identified through this process that you've talked about, there's no, other than the ones that are statutorily required, like a 504 or an IEP. There's no formal plan that's developed in writing by your, for example, the, the group...
That's SST.
Yeah. There's no formal plan that's identified for a freshman or a sophomore, is there?
As far as, I mean, we are getting...
How would, how would I, how would I know in writing that these steps have been followed with respect to this particular student who is obviously failing?
Well, part of our problem is the identification. We're relying on teachers and staff and parents to be able to tell us that this student is struggling. The problem is, we don't have the staff to just be monitoring every student as we go forward with all the responsibilities that guidance has. We've added a guidance council, but at the beginning of that school year, they are very busy with the alterations that they need to deal with also.
But can't Aspen kick out a report on a weekly basis or a bi-weekly basis or a monthly basis?
Our DNF report, from what I understand, can only be run after a term is finished. It won't let me do it five weeks through a term. It has, the bin has to be closed and finished and then sent through, and then it pulls the information from there. What I was sold is my end of the...
All right, so, so you get it at the end of the quarter. What happens then? Do all of the students that show up on that report who aren't on IEPs or 504s get some kind of a, a plan that's gonna address their needs so that, so that we know, we could know objectively that you've considered academic support or literacy across the curriculum or math applications or science review or any of those programs that are available in the school?
When I look at those lists and I see those kids who are not on those plans, who are not doing those, those are all kids who have been coming up in SST and we've already been talking about probably two to three times already this year. When there's one or two, if there's one or two kids who haven't, those are a great note for me to bring to my SST because I'm allowed to bring students up myself and say, hey, let's talk about this child, let's talk about that child.
But I'm just trying to, and I, and I understand this is a lot of work, but I'm just trying to understand if there's any accountability. In other words, to, to objectively know that each one of these students that's appearing on this report at the end of semester has had the attention of this group and is getting the intervention and is it recorded in writing anywhere that this is the intervention that's been provided to this particular student who's obviously failing at the end of the report?
No, we haven't had anything formalized. It is something now going forward that we'll be looking to do and look at the list, like I said, of the students that we haven't already been talking about and say, these are the three or four or five kids that appear on this list that haven't come up. Let's talk about them to make sure we're having those conversations.
All right, and just one, I think this sort of ties up on the kind of concerns that Mike was expressing. You mentioned that Mrs., Dr. Browsford and others have reached out to seniors and to parents of seniors who are at risk of not graduating at this point. But my question is, and I know, again, this is difficult and time-consuming, but what outreach is there to parents of, say, a freshman or a sophomore that is really struggling? I mean, you can, as professionals and as some of the teachers, probably can assess that a freshman is really not on track to graduate. You know, obviously, there's tremendous opportunity to change direction, but, you know, the perception or, you know, the assessment would be, this kid's gonna struggle for a while and, you know, may not be on track to graduate. So at what point is there, are there any, are there any standards where if this occurs, there has to be outreach to the parents and at least, and again, I know it's, it can be a struggle. We talked about the surveys and the response. You know, you may not get a response from a parent, but, you know, can we, is there any documentation, at least the effort was made?
A lot of times with us, and we're talking about, especially the freshman kids, a lot of our freshman teachers are aware of that and where the struggles that freshmen have. A lot of times, they are giving us those names and we are having those conversations and we are having guidance councils reach out, what's going on with us, what's going on with that? Do we have a formalized plan to do that with a written list? No, we don't, you know? But we're, you know, we are addressing the students that, as Wes began, with the people that we have. We're, we're putting a lot of different things on everybody's plate and each, for example, with those conversations with the seniors. Each one of those meetings tend to be somewhere between thirty-five, thirty and forty-five minutes long. If you have ten of those, fifteen, twenty of those, fifty of those, because you wanna make sure you add their bubble wide enough to make sure nobody falls through the cracks and says, I didn't get a phone call. By the way, those are gonna happen four times at each point in the term. That's a lot of time that we're eating up of those individuals.
Okay, so I have a couple of more questions, but I, I interrupted, interrupted Mike as I thought they were kind of in line with the questions he was answering. Turning back to you.
They were. Couple of questions. How many AP classes do we have, roughly?
I wanna say it's seventeen.
How many sections of...
Well, courses, not sections.
Courses are twelve or so.
Is it twelve? I thought it was a little higher than that. With the, with the virtual high schools.
Virtual high school, right. How many?
It's about twelve or thirteen for actual courses, and then we do have some students who take virtual high school courses here, AP classes, but actual courses that we run, it's about twelve or thirteen.
How many sections of instructional strategies do we have?
I don't know off the top of my head. There's quite a few.
Okay, and so I, I guess where I'm going with the instructional strategies, correct me if I'm wrong, a student needs to be on an IEP to enroll in an instructional strategies class. So can you put the slide where it shows the number of students on the DNF report? So freshman, thirty-six. So those are thirty-six students with multiple failures.
Correct.
Right? I would love to see a statistically or a report like that that shows how many were D's and F's.
Right.
Right? Because that's just showing F's.
Correct.
Okay, and that's showing multiple F's.
Correct. No, I think that this is showing multiple S, multiple failures.
So the number of students that, the number of freshmen that failed one class is greater than thirty-six?
Correct. Just be aware, some of the courses that they're failing may be part-time courses. It may be a course that's two periods per cycle, not a major course. So some of these numbers here are not necessarily all majors. They may be other courses, you know, engineering design.
Hope we don't, hope we don't have that data.
I, I have that data.
So, so a lot of times when I look on, at, at numbers to deal with, you know, with the school districts, I try to, to kind of rationalize that in the manufacturing part, right? And I know that when you make widgets, you make good widgets and you make bad widgets, right? And what you wanna do is you wanna make as many good widgets with the least amount of resources as possible. But to do that, you're gonna make less bad widgets, right? So when you're, when you, if you're not identifying clearly how many of those widgets aren't... So, when you're, when you, if you're not identifying clearly how many of those widgets aren't, aren't really meeting the bar, I don't know how you put plans in place to improve. Right? So like when you talk about, well, some of those might be, you know, some of the minor classes. Okay, that's a minor defect, that's not a major defect. Alright, because maybe they're not engaged in whatever that classes. But I guess, when I look at it and, and, you know, I've said this before, our high-performance students are gonna do well no matter what. My biggest concern of a low-performing students, and not just the lower twenty-five, I'm gonna go with the lower fifty. Right? Because I think for Somerset, Berkeley to, to rise above everybody else is we gotta make sure that we are bringing up the bottom, the, the bottom students and bringing them up to a place where they graduate, they feel like they're ready. They feel like they're ready for Bridgewater or UMass Dartmouth and not just the BCC. Or they, they need to feel like they're ready for college. And it's not only the point of graduation, it's the point of, you know what? Like, the child did very poorly freshman year and their self-esteem is completely low because they're not doing well and it's continued to sophomore year and junior year and whatever. So, if we're not identifying that group and not just at the end of a, a term, but on a pretty constant basis, I think that's where the failure.
Except for the fact that going back to what I've said, one student last year does not get the diploma. I think it was ninety-two or ninety-three percent last year went on to a two or four-year school. We're having a lot of our kids going to the BCCs. We just had BCC in here today, yesterday, one of the two days to talk about instant, instant, um, acceptance and doing those things. So to say that there's a bunch of these kids who are not succeeding, I don't think is true. I think through the state standard of grad, our, well, state standard of MCAS, our standard of graduation requirements and looking at, we're getting them to those points. And to the point where they're confident enough that they are applying to go to two or four-year schools, ninety-three percent of them. Another group of that percentage, that's not that, let's call it seven percent, eight percent, whatever that is, are going into the military. Some of those kids aren't going to either and they wanna go in and, you know, do something else with their lives or try something else in the workforce. And sometimes those kids are coming back after three or four years to go to BCC and start up a college or MTTI or whatever they want. So this, it, you're making it sound like we're leaving a lot of these kids behind and they're not succeeding. I disagree with you. I see these kids, they may not be succeeding right off the bat and that's okay. Because with the failure gives you your room for growth, it shows you where that needs to be. Because they failed term one doesn't mean they're gonna fail term sixteen. We're getting all these kids here. Everything we've put in place, we're helping kids get to where they need to go. Kids are passing the MCAS, kids are graduating from our school at high rates. Kids are going to two and four-year schools at very high rates. I did reference the school I went to visit and that they were all advanced and proficient. What I didn't tell you is that they are absolutely struggling with the concept of the high hospitalizations that are going on due to stress from kids put on by trying to get to those numbers. I will not sacrifice our kids to put that much stress on a kid, just so our data points look what their data points do. I walked out of there, I had kids cry, wa- talking to kids and interviewing kids at that school who are crying because they got ninety-sevens and not ninety-eights. So if that's what that takes to get to that metric, I'd rather see our kids where they are.
Well, the other, the other metrics too that you can look at too is when you have students that are having social emotional issues because they're failing and because they are not getting the support they need.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And because they, they keep saying that they're gonna do better every day. And we're not getting any notifications from the schools. To Mr., Mr. Pierce's point, there are some students and parents, there are some parents that aren't aware that their students are failing. They're not getting notified from the school. They are, the students are not getting brought up in the SST, right? So, I'm not sure exactly, you know, what's going on, but there, y- you do have a lot of things in place that are doing well. But I'm telling you, there are kids that are falling through the cracks and those are the ones I don't worry about.
Me too.
And, and I would just add, accepting everything that you say, David, the measure now is not how low a student is, uh, because you're absolutely right. It varies from, you know, in some districts it may be, you know, really disastrous and tragic and in others it's at a higher level. But we're being measured by how these students progress. No matter what the starting point is, we're expecting to bring them along and improve them. So that's, that's just, I, I think.
And I think, and I, I go back to the numbers I just put up. I think we're doing that. I think we're doing it at a really great rate. I think we're working really hard. Is there probably some kids that we can work on catching them in on that? Absolutely. But, and I'm not saying we're perfect and there's some things we could probably put in place.
We haven't been measuring that objectively, you know, it's, now it's gonna be measured, somehow it's gonna be measured objectively. So, we can, we can, uh, feel, feel some confidence that that's happening, but we really don't have any objective measure of that at this point. And that's, and, and that is going to, that is going to happen and that's why, um, you know, I, my concern is that we make sure that we're paying as much attention and giving the same opportunities to these kids as we are our highest achieving students. So let's, we're just kind of probing this. It's not intended to be critical, but we're just probing it to see, you know, where we are and where we have to, where we have to go.
I agree with you, I just, when you look back at the list of things that we have as supports, our high achieving kids aren't using any of them.
No.
You know, we, we, those are all kids that are struggling and put in place to help those kids. So it's not that we're ignoring anybody. We actually put, I would say disproportionately amount of time in supports, especially with people, personnel supports there, support.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And I know that you spend a lot of time talking about this, but what I'm hearing and I'm, on the, on the K38 as well, is that our freshman students that are coming in, and if I'm incorrect, you, correct me.
Okay.
But i- it, it sounds like it might take us some time to identify students that are struggling, that are fr-
We're having a hard time with students realizing that the high school is a different type of situation than a middle school. That, that students, some students, especially this group of students, have not been successful year after year at a middle school, but have gone on. And so now they come to us and we put out some boundaries and we have higher standards and they just think they're gonna pass anyway because that's what you do. I've been doing it for the last three, four years, I just keep moving on from grade to grade to grade. And so now what's happening is part of our struggle is they don't think they have to. And so to get that into them to realize, no, you have to do this, you're not going to move on.
Okay, so as a K38 committee member, that's a red flag for us, that if we're not preparing our middle school students for high school, that's something that we need to have discussions about as to how we can do that as well. But I'm wondering, is there dialogue with the middle school administration in guidance to identify the students that are in this category and struggling? So when they do enter the school, it, it should almost be like a handoff, like a relay race, where you're handing the baton to the next person to say, these are the folks that we think are, are going to struggle and then you have a red flag and we keep an eye on them and, and, and set up a plan.
We have, we have articulation notes. So, our assistant principals will meet with the assistant principals or guidance from Somerset Middle, from Berkeley Middle, and have a conversation about who are your kids that we really need to know about, who are the ones who are coming in? Sometimes it's social emotionally, sometimes behaviorally, sometimes academically. So they'll give us the heads up on, hey, just watch this one. And then that's one of those key flags that we're looking for. So, when a name comes up or something happens, we say, oh, we've, we've heard that name before. It, it puts it in our banks that we know that, this is sound familiar, let's go look at what they've said. Hey, look, this is a student who tends to struggle or this is something that's, this one never does homework that we know about. You know, you really need to stay on this one. This one worked better when we had him write an agenda every day. You know, so we'll get those notes from the middle school, um, both middle schools, when they meet for articulation at the end of the school year.
So, wait.
I think that's what you were asking.
It is, it is, thank you for that. Um, and so if there's thirty-six students that are failing two classes.
Mm-hmm.
So far this year that are freshmen.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any data to know if that's an, a spike or if that's a norm?
I'm not sure. I don't have that yet.
We have no idea.
So, um, I'm gonna exercise my prerogative as the chair here. Um, unless someone feels they have an urgent question because we, we have some other items on the agenda. What I'm gonna suggest is, could you make that presentation available to Robin so she can circulate it?
Sure.
And then if people have other questions or concerns, we can put them in writing, so that we can get them, uh, through the administration in advance and then we can continue this discussion at another meeting? Is that, is that okay?
Sure.
I'll send it to her right now.
Thank you, thanks David.
Thank you. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Because we now, you're back on for student activity accounts. And so, um, my, my concern, um, is that, um, DOR has made student activity accounts, uh, one of its focuses and there are guidelines and there, and, and I think that's a result of the fact, and I'm not suggesting that it was the case here in, in any way, but there were some school districts that had issues with student activity accounts. And my understanding of a student activity account is that it's funds that are raised by students and used for student activities and that those kinds of funds can't be expended without the approval of students. Officers of the particular organization have to sign off on any kind of authorization of payment. So when I looked at this list, and it isn't, in fairness, it isn't, it's, it's captioned extracurricular activities. It doesn't say this is a list of student activity accounts, but, um, it was kind of presented to us at our last meeting that this was a list of student activity accounts. And when I look at this, there are several that don't appear to me to be student activity accounts. So, I really feel that it's important that what are on this list are, the student activity accounts are distinguished from other accounts where there, there are some budget funds being used and, and they're clearly not a student activity account. There's one, one here, I think, um, the Envirathon, where, which specifically says that budget funds are being used, um, to support these activities. And it says that there are maybe some funds left over from prior fundraising. So I'm not quite sure whether you've got a combination of budget funds and student activity funds and some funds, the expenditure of which have to be approved by students and others that don't. The, I think clearly the class accounts where funds are raised by the students in a particular class and they're used for class activities, um, are student activity accounts. I don't know whether the ski club funds, which these trips are totally funded by the students, but I'm not sure that the students have any, uh, say over how they're expended or whether they sign off on the expenditures, so is that a student activity account or not? I just, that's what I was looking for clarification of. I think the student, student council, those funds are raised by the students and I, it, I would think the students decide how they're, how they're being spent. So that's student activity account. Any funds that are expended from that account have to be approved by students. Ultimately, the principal writes the check, as I understand it, but there has to be his sign off. And we need, it needs to be documented. Raiders turf probably falls in the same category. National Honor Society, um, probably, but I'm not absolutely sure. Yearbook? So, do we have? I, is it a matter of how, does, does the treasurer have these, um, accounts classified? Because obviously we have to maintain these records. We need to, we need to, if the Department of Revenue comes knocking, we have to have evidence that every expenditure from a student activity account has been signed off on by a student. So, what accounts are we actually being asked to authorize or approve?
Carol, you wanna take that?
Okay, um, you asked a lot of questions, I don't know where to start to answer those. The majority, I think you, yeah, the list of extracurricular activities, the majority of those to me do fall under the student activities. Most of the funds come from the students, they're signed off by the students, all those records that you were asking about. Ev- every student activity comes to be proving that it's been approved by the principal, the treasurer of student activities, the advisor and a student treasurer. Every one of them has to have a signature before they will even be processed through my office. So if they don't, they go back and get those approvals. Same with like any form of thing for a check, if they want me expenses, the same thing. Has to have all those signatures before anything gets processed. I also make sure that if something comes up, like they wanna, um, a student activity wants to do a fundraising and they wanna donate money, I ask, make sure I have some kind, something in writing where the students have voted on it and signed off on it and that it's also in the records. So I, it is proven that these are student activities run by the students. It's not just an advisor making a decision.
Okay, so that's true of the student council account?
Student council at this point have not done any fundraising.
Okay, what about Raiders turf?
Raiders turf is run by the DECA. And again, you saw the groups, the students did that presentation earlier where they were talking about the Raiders turf, where they're very involved in it, making the decisions, what's being brought and everything. Again, they sign off on everything.
Alright, National Honor Society?
National Honor Society, same thing.
Okay, how about semi-formal dance?
Semi-formal dance, again, it's mainly, it's, all the fundraising, it's from the students. The students decide where they're gonna hold the dance and everything. It's all, again, and again, they sign all the paperwork for everything.
How about yearbook?
Same with that.
Ski club?
Ski club, a hundred percent student funded and they get all the paperwork signed and everything.
By the student officers?
Yeah. Everything I get, I make sure that they all sign off.
Black and white prom?
Yeah.
Peer leadership?
Peer leadership, we really haven't had much, um, come through on it, but I think that's something they're working on and it's, we wanna make sure it's approved so if money does come through, we can.
DECA?
DECA, yeah.
What about Envirathon?
Same with anything that comes through Envirathon, student activities, it is all signed up on.
Well, but it says here in this statement that the money that we use from the school budget is the registration fee and the transportation cost for our annual meet as well as training sessions. That's not student activity.
You gotta keep going though. We currently have a student account that has money for team uniforms, that, the money in that account has been from fundraising in the past.
Right.
So I think they're referring to that this student account doesn't, it doesn't have budget fund in it. It has the fundraising money from past years and whatever they do in the future to buy t-shirts and things like that nature.
So are there two separate accounts there, are they segregated?
All I see, when I, because I work with student activities, so the only money that, the last couple of years, Envirathon has not, um, raised any money. They're using money that was raised in the past.
Bootleg.
And everybody is signing off.
Alright. I assume these class items are the same. Best buddies?
Carol, what are best buddies?
Best buddies, I don't.
Back page.
Oh, last page. Best, best buddies, um, I have not seen anything come through this year for them at all, so I don't know if Sophia on here in case something does come through.
And the final, the final one, hip hop? There doesn't seem to be much information about that. Is that a student activity account?
Yes, we think it is, we think these are all student activity accounts.
But they may not be active.
Exactly.
And again, anything that comes through for any of these, I, I make sure that people, it's there, signed, documented, everything.
Okay. Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve this list of student activity accounts.
So move second.
Alright, motion made by Mrs. Fields and seconded by Mr. Lowery in a third of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? unanimous. All right. Next item, budget and financial matters. Does anyone have any questions on the monthly invoices?
No.
If not, I ask everyone to sign the warrants before leaving tonight. Next is policies for second reading. Mrs. Field?
So you have a list of second reading policies. We went into detail at our last meeting, we are in the second reading, but just as an overview recap, the following policies were updated with language due to the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act that was enacted on April 1st. And those policies that are affected are AC, nondiscrimination, GBA, equal employment opportunity, GCF, professional staff hiring, JB, equal education opportunity, JFBB, school choice. So again, these are policies that were updated with language in accordance with the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. And as I mentioned at our last meeting, we went into detail on those. And then secondly, the other ones that are up for second reading and review are two new policies that will be added to our manual. And these are for, in accordance with the Every Student Succeeds Act, those are JFAVE, education opportunities for military children, and JFABF, education opportunities for children in foster care.
And there's one more listed, school choice?
That's part of the, that language is part of the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. My apologies for the order.
So does anyone have any questions or concerns about any of the policies that are listed on the agenda? They are on for second reading. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve policy AC, policy GBA, policy GCF, policy JB, policy JFAVE, policy JFABF, and JFBB. So.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Larabee and seconded by Mrs. Field. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous.
And just as one final update, the policy subcommittee, policy subcommittee will be meeting again on December 19th.
All right. Next, under unfinished business update on superintendent evaluation, Mr. Skolov requested that this not be deferred to our meeting on January 3rd for his presentation on the goals. And we'll, at that time, we'll set a schedule to submit written evaluations from the committee members so that we'll be able to, hopefully, the goal should be to do our, present our evaluation at the meeting on January 24th. Other matters of, for information, do we have anything to report from the Somerset Cade School District?
I do. Mostly just lost my notes, but at the last school committee meeting, it was held at South Elementary. That's part of what we did last year and this year is we try to have at least one meeting at the different schools. And just like last year, the teachers and students actually sent us on a little scattered kind of deal where we had to go to different classrooms and answer questions and it was a lot of fun. It was definitely a lot of fun. And we had the NCAS presentation at South Elementary because of the award that South Elementary School got for, and I know I'm going to mess up the, is it School of Recognition?
Yes.
Let the, School of Recognition. So that was great. And that was the main fun stuff. We had a couple of articles that we originally put on a town warrant. We decided we didn't need them for various reasons and we go over to pull those off. And like missing anything else?
It was really that and the NCAS presentation.
So that's all.
So Mr. Giliducci, do you have anything to report?
Yes, I do. Our principals continued our participation in the Soul of Leadership program sponsored by the Massachusetts School Administration Association. This institute, which began in the summer and will continue throughout this school year, focuses on helping us to hone our leadership skills while developing resilience in our demanding roles. It includes face-to-face group meetings as well as small groups, video meetings. This has been an amazing experience so far and our principal is pleased to report our part on it. The Staff Professional Day of November 6th featured Dr. Anita Archer. Dr. Archer is a nationally and internationally recognized presenter on the importance of student engagement. She shared multiple techniques with our staff along with the theoretical basis for their importance. Her presentation was well received and the principal has already seen evidence of some of the techniques being included in our classrooms. On November 8th, our librarian, Mrs. McMiner, hosted the annual poetry night for students who are not, who are not in fifth grade and their families. The 43 students who were published in the Young American Poetry Digest were recognized at this event where they share their writing and engage in a book signing. Mrs. McMiner is our outstanding librarian. The fifth BCS vendor and craft fair was, Berkeley Community School was held on November 17th. It was a highly successful event that featured 75 vendors. Great feedback was received from vendors and shoppers alike. And the next thing is, the quarterly review of attendance at the end of term one showed that 110 students have earned perfect attendance thus far. These students have had no instances of absence, tardiness, or dismissal since the beginning of the school year. They're working very hard to get 100% attendance. As, at the faculty meeting on the early release day held November 21st, staff worked on a variety of initiatives. The staff involved in leading our positive behavior intervention support group to meet to continue their planning. Staff that are examining K-4 English arts programs met to review curriculum materials. The remaining staff worked on curriculum development as a follow-up to our professional day workshop where Anita Archer. And the food drive to benefit the open shelves food pantry was a great success. A full truckload of food was donated during the month of November. Our fourth grade students under the direction of Mrs. Reynolds will participate in the Lights on Celebration that's this coming Sunday, December 9th. The students will perform selections featuring the playing handouts. Hopefully, it won't be snowing. From our middle school, our student staff had a great Thanksgiving break spending time with family and friends. We completed a wonderful food drive that helped to support local families through the open shelves food pantry in Berkeley by collecting canned goods and non-perishable food items along with monetary donation. We will begin our annual coat drive where we collect new and gently-used coats for future area of families in need. Our friends at Dermody Cleaners, which is located in Taunton, clean all of the coats free for the help that got them there and they need to go to needy people. We are hoping to keep, to offer the following after-school art clubs, homework club for students in grades five and six, newspaper club, Lego Fun Partner Club, and writing, and winter track for our winter session beginning in December. Our teachers are giving of their time and talents during this time of the year with our basketball teams, cheer squad, and theater groups, targeting the interests of many of our students. And our theater group received a wonderful donation from the Bay Coast Bank of $1,000. The bank is opening shortly in Berkeley. December found our staff and administration team working on the FY 2020 school budget. We remain committed to providing the highest quality education to our students while supporting staff and instructional programming that is only aligned to the common core standards, but that challenges our students to be successful and competitive in high school and college by building study habits and time management skills that transcend all area of their lives as well as protecting opportunities for them to develop other talents as well. The eighth graders continue to get their high school application ready for vocational schools as well as parent private schools. We begin to draft the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School schedule in early February. But we have already had some sessions with our eighth graders early on because February is late, so we don't wait till February. We've already been stoking our kids to be involved in coming to Somerset Berkeley High School. And all of our eighth graders will be able to attend the Somerset Berkeley Big Buddy Day at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School on either 1210 or 1211. Our students will pair it up with a high school student and will follow their schedule as well as eat lunch in the cafeteria. Like David said, that's a big thing for them to eat in the high school cafeteria. I don't know why, but they like eating in the high school cafeteria. Our health teacher, fortunately with our new budget and the amount we have acquired, we do have a health teacher who will be presenting grade-level presentations for grades three and four in the new year, grade three in January, grade four in late May. She does teach at the middle school, but she's going to extend herself out to do some work with these students in the K-4 school. Okay? On Friday, December 21st, we will be holding our annual dodgeball tournament under the direction of Mr. Santos, our physical education teacher, and with the support of all the staff. Students and many staff will bring their teams together for a day filled with good fun and healthy competition. The final round will be held on Old School Assembly for students only during last period. We are fortunate to have our rock band members perform for us on this day. They do have a rock band at the middle school. They will do a set of four songs to get the festivals going.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is to acknowledge our students of the month for November. We'd like to congratulate them all. Ethan Batello for science, Warren Batello for art, Kendall Shavz mathematics, Jackson Costa, English Language Arts, Caitlin Fagan, business, Madison Goncalves, wellness, Leo James, engineering technology, Sean Kennedy, world language, Ethan Lozaro, music, and Elizabeth Orlando, social studies. Congratulations to all of them. Next item, approval of minutes of prior meetings. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 13th, 2018, open session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagriati, seconded by Mr. Giliducci. Is there any discussion?
I have an abstention.
Okay. So alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Mrs. Rodwell abstained. So you, six in the affirmative, one abstention. Next is the executive session of November 13th, 2018. I did not attend that executive session, so Larabee, do handle that matter.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the executive session minutes from November 13th.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
With one recusal and one abstention?
Yeah.
So five in the affirmative, one recusal and one abstention.
Thank you. Next item, topic's not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. There are no items under that agenda item. Action for, action items for future meetings. Does anyone have anything under that topic?
One, are we going to speak again or have a more dialogue in regards to the efforts made to identify and support struggling students?
We'll see what response we get from committee members. Maybe helpful to have the curriculum director address some of those issues as well, so I would say perhaps at our January 24th meeting.
If you have any questions, would you forward those to me, please? And just copy Robin? Okay, thank you.
Next item, public input. Is there any public input?
Go first.
Yes.
Senior first.
Mrs. Sheen was first.
I'm sorry.
Ladies first.
Mr. Mullins, ladies first.
Oh, yes. I owe me.
Real quick. At the last school committee meeting, you had tabled a discussion and a vote on the employee handbook that the union leaders and the superintendent had met with the.
Treasurer.
A.D.R. Gordon. Thank you.
The reason for, the reason that it's not on our agenda is that it will be on the agenda for the adjoint meeting on the 13th.
Okay, and that's perfectly fine. My, my question is, when the, when we met, we had some concerns regarding different things, and I know that there were edits that were made. And when I spoke with the A.D.R. director, she told me that she made those edits and sent them on to the superintendent. Those edits were never forwarded to the union leadership, so I've not gotten a completed copy of what those, what that final document looks like. So before this body takes a vote on it, I'd like to, as a union leader, have an opportunity to look at it to make sure that the edits were, were made.
Okay. Is there a red line copy available?
There should be. Well, I'll work with Carolyn on that.
I think there were mostly minor editorial changes, weren't they, that have been made? Correct, just spelling corrections.
There were concerns that we had in certain areas. And I want to make sure that they were addressed. If they weren't addressed, then I'd be bringing up those concerns at the next meeting.
Carolyn, would you forward that to Christine tomorrow?
Thank you.
All right.
Tony? Jim, go ahead. I was going to ask this gentleman, I assumed he's the principal, about the charts he had up. And one figure I noticed that appeared in two locations. One was the lower 25%, and the other one was in the people that got a 20, a lower reduction on the food. I forgot what the, what the phrase was, but it meant, I guess they couldn't afford it.
Free and reduced lunch.
A reduced lunch. Did anybody else notice the reduction, the innate relationship between the lower 25% and the reduced meal? And also, do you know what the meal was involved? Do they get a meal at a reduced price or they just get maybe a sandwich at a glass of milk?
So typically, I think what he was trying to do is that he, the lower 25% is a, is a measurement that now the state is looking at. So he took that 25%, which is always going to be 250 students, more or less, if we've got 1,000 students in the building. And he tried to provide some metrics to, to look at the characteristics of that group. And so one of those metrics, one of those measurements are how many of that group qualify for free and reduced lunch?
Is it free, is it free food they get?
It's either free or reduced. It's based on.
They don't just get a sandwich and a glass of milk.
They get, yeah.
They get the, the same, the same full meal that everyone else would, would, would pay for.
And it.
If I was in a grammar school, at a class of school, and nuns, they would bring, they were fed from the, the chad, they'd bring them lunches down. But some of the lunches would, some of the nuns would say when school stopped, before it started, they'd go through the whole, all they, what did you have for breakfast? And you'd be surprised, you hear some of the kids would say none.
Yeah.
And so it affected the kids, you know, a whole kid ain't going to learn, that's all I'm saying.
Right. No, they are provided.
That's true. And that's, and that's why we have a program to provide lunches for students who might not otherwise be able to.
Get a full lunch.
Yes.
Glad to hear it.
We're glad to have you back, by the way. We missed you over the last handful of meetings, so.
Unless, you know, somebody's watching you.
Mr. Casitas?
Yeah, I'd like the, a little observation here. Watching the principal, David, speak about that program that he's got, I've never seen anything like that. I mean, this is amazing. How a kid can drop out with the support that this high school's given somebody is beyond me. I can't understand that. I know you guys want more data, but I mean, I've never, I don't, I don't know if other schools probably have a program like this, but that I find very unique, number one. Number two, I'm really surprised about him sending out information to parents, which I think is another problem in our town. I don't think parents get involved with kids in high school like they should be. I don't think parents get involved with kids in high school like they should be, and that's another problem. I mean, you folks have your hands full, but I mean, if parents don't follow up on this and say, hey, is their homework done? You know, and I think maybe years back, I know in my days, my parents were very involved with my school, and I, I don't think we see it here. I mean, 27 people answer back a questionnaire that was sent out with what, how many students? 800?
1,040.
That's terrible. That's terrible for our town. I can't believe that.
The, the thing you have to realize is when that email got sent out, the link to that survey was in a document. And it's not like the email went out and said, hey, please fill out the survey. Survey, it said, the email goes out like it goes out monthly, right? And it just talks about, it's the newsletter, right? The reader read.
Yeah, but there was subsequent...
It went out a few times.
It originally, it originated in the read, and then there were targeted emails that were sent after October 18th that said, please complete the NIASK survey in the, in the subject line. That did just have a link to it. But the first one, Mike, yes, you're right, it was embedded in the read.
You know, you know what I'd really like to see someday is, I'd like to see these kids today who are really up there with their grades, I'd like to know how, how involved the family is at that level versus all our kids, say, if it's 50% or below, how are they involved? And number two, when he got up there, the principal got up there, since one person didn't get a degree or a diploma for 2018, that's amazing. That's amazing. I mean, I, you know, I just think that the school's doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. George, you get his name and that information?
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is executive session. One of the items listed is to discuss deployment of security personnel devices, our strategies with respect thereto. I'm not, I don't believe there's anything for us to discuss under that topic. Does anyone have anything? Okay, that being the case. I will recuse myself from the discussion on the contract involving the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees Professional Unit.
I don't think there's anything, I don't think there's anything to report, Rick, on that yet, because, you know...
No, we haven't.
We haven't met. There was nothing to report there.
All right. Then, in that case, I will entertain a motion pursuant to Massachusetts Chapter 30a, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation with the Somerset Teachers Association, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the regional school committee, and the chair so declares.
So moved.
Okay. Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. We will take a roll call vote. I would note that the committee will not return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call, Mrs. Field?
Aye.
Mrs. Gagliardi?
Aye.
Mr. Giliducci?
Aye.
Mr. Batello?
Aye.
Mrs. Rodwell?
Aye.
And the chair votes are... Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Good to see you guys again.